Okay, team, we are gonna get started. We're still waiting for some technical fixes to be worked out, but we're gonna, we're gonna get going, as it's not a requirement that we have a video recording. So, um, so the first thing is to, well, I guess I'm gonna call the meeting to order. So the first thing is just some logistics for this meeting. If you're joining us remotely, if you change your name to your first and last name, so I can address you properly, that'd be great. When you speak, if you could start by saying your name and where you live, we are asking folks to keep their comments to two minutes or less, and Donna over here will help us with the time. And if, as long as you're speaking to something that is related to an agenda item, if you could just keep it germane to that topic, that would be great. If you have something to say that is not about something on our agenda, you can do that during the general business and appearances. And if you wish to speak, just make sure that I call on you first, and we, if you have multiple questions, if you could ask all those questions consecutively, that would be great, as we don't really get into like a back and forth kind of dialogue in this space. This is not really for that.
You have recorded.
Um, and I think that is, I think that is it. All right, so the next thing is to review and approve the agenda. And there are gonna be some adjustments to the agenda. Specifically, we're gonna reorder some of the later items, so after the appointment to the restroom committee, let me just go back and see here.
I think we've adjusted the online agenda.
Oh, the online, okay, so the online agenda reflects the...
The proposed changes.
The proposed changes. Just wanna make sure that that looks right, and it does, which is great. Okay, so, just in case folks are wondering, that means after the restroom committee appointment, we'll go to planning commission appointment, then our audited financial statements, the Wrightsville Beach Recreation District presentation, then the CVPSA item, and then our budget presentation, and potential local option sales tax charter change discussion, utility status update, police presentation, and then a discussion around the composition of the Public Arts Commission. So, that is our order. Anyone have any information to have it be something other than what I've just mentioned? Okay, so that will consider the agenda approved. So we're on to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda, and so if you would like to make a comment, now is the time, and there are multiple people who would like to make a comment, so you can just come up as you are ready, and there'll be a queue probably. You, I believe you can, yeah, that's also fine.
...lumbering old man who has respiratory problems, so this makes life easier for me. Is this on?
Yep.
It's on, okay. So my name is Tom Mulholland. I live in the Lane Shops in Montpelier, and council members, and is the proper form of address Madam Mayor?
That's fine.
Okay, 'cause I remember show on TV, Madam Secretary, so I thought, well, must be appropriate. So, I'm, I'm part and parcel of agenda item number 15, which has been euphemistically termed "composition of the Public Arts Commission." And I don't mean to be a bother to the commi, to the council, but you might appreciate that whereas for you it is an agenda item, for me, it's about my character being maligned, which doesn't set well with me. And so, I see that, it says here, "The council may wish to enter executive session under 1 VSA 313A 2, 3, and 4." And upon reading that VSA...
The Public Arts Commission.
Huh?
Kelly.
It says that for a disciplinary or dismissal action against a public officer or employee, I'm not an employee, so I must be a public officer. So this is, "A public body may not hold an executive session except to consider one or more of the following." Then so a disciplinary or dismissal action against a public officer or employee, but nothing in this subsection shall be construed to impair the right of such officer or employee to a public hearing. And so, I request that this discussion be taken place in the context of a public hearing and not executive session. I read the memorandum that was sent to all the city council members and the mayor, and frankly, it's profoundly flawed, and I feel that if the council goes into executive session and bases their discussion and then subsequent decision upon that memorandum, that a profound injustice is going to be rendered onto me. And so that's my request, and I can say right off the bat, there are some really gross omissions in that report, and also under the thing of like undisputed facts, I mean, within the body itself, you can see that the facts are disputed. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine. That's up to you.
So we can, it'll be up to the council as to whether or not we have, we go into executive session, and I think doing one does actually not also preclude doing the other, and so that's something that we potentially could discuss there as well. So, thank you, and I think we'll take up that discussion when we get to that agenda item. Okay, thank you. There are a number of other folks, so come on up. Yep. So we're gonna get to the folks who are with us in person first, and then we'll get to those who have their hands raised digitally. Welcome.
Being in America, talent. Trying to do my best. Good evening. My name is Pelling Cohen, and I live at 292 Westwood Drive, Montpelier.
Excuse me, could you move closer to the microphone?
I was just closer to you.
Just closer.
Closer to me.
Just to have to be on it so people...
Okay, is it better? Should I start again? Okay. Good evening. I am Pelling Cohen. I live at 292 Westwood Drive, Montpelier. I moved here in 2007 from Turkey. It seems very far away, but thanks to technology, I can still see my friends and my family. I have two kids, 16 and 14. They're at Montpelier High School, and I'm dealing with their teenage drama every single day. So I think, I thought myself, okay, if I can deal with them, maybe I can apply for the city council vacancy for District 2. I think I am now strong enough to deal with like all different challenges. I know Connor is such a nice person, and he has done great things. It will be difficult to replace him, but I, I think I can also contribute great things through my international background, and also my professional background. I work at Norwich University. I am the Leadership Program Chair and also Leadership Center Director. My, one of my strengths is about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I was very fortunate to work or to serve on Sajak Committee with our city councilor Jennifer and Lauren. And on that committee, my team, we did great things, and all the things I learned from them make me think, okay, what can I do more? So I went and I attended graduate certificate program at Cornell University, and I got my certificate, and I start applying all this knowledge in my work, and I wanna apply for this position, and also I wanna run for the city council in upcoming election, and I wanna bring all those experience to our city, because since the first day, everybody was so helpful to me whenever I need help, thanks to Front Porch Forum, of course. You know, I just typed my problem, and everybody's emailing, offering help, so I never truly felt myself alone, but it was a difficult, sometimes challenging transformation, especially in Turkey. We sit and like chatting, but here, everybody likes doing something and seeing their friends. And one time, my friend went to hike to the Hubbard Park, and we forgot that I have asthma, and I was almost killing myself. Now, it is our joke, you know, among our, "Do you remember that day you were almost killing to be socialized?" I said, "Oh, yeah, I remember." So I wanna bring my international perspective and my diversity, equity, inclusion professional and personal experience, and I know that demographic is changing, and I just attending a meeting with one of the federal... Okay. So we are expecting 500 NIV refugees, so I thought I might help, and thank you for giving this opportunity to me. I have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Pelling, if I can. So we will be making this appointment at our next meeting, and do you anticipate attending that meeting to, I know you've just introduced yourself, but we'll be hoping that all of the folks interested in the District 2 appointment would be present to introduce themselves then. Do you anticipate being here next time?
Yeah, I'm definitely be here. Thank you for mentioning it.
Yes, yeah, thank you, yeah. Great, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sandy Vitstum, 14 Loomis Street. You may have heard from Front Porch Forum that my water reducer, pressure reducer burst this weekend and caused damage in my tenant's apartment. I was surprised in the consequences, learning that this is actually happening to many houses in Montpelier and possibly businesses as well. And the reducer itself is a small investment, but when it surprises you by blowing, it can cause quite a bit of damage. We lost a hot water heater, and I heard that one condo up on Murray Hill lost all of its floors, and then the condo below it also did. So I understand it's a serious problem, and there've been, there's been good coverage in the bridge in Vermont Digger recently about this, but, and I am totally admire our Public Works Department, 'cause I know they're doing everything they can, and they get out as quickly as they can to solve problems. But I'm hoping that the captains of our civic ship, which are you folks, with the help of Public Works could do something a little more proactive, because it is quite disturbing to have 200 pounds of pressure, 200 PSI, all of a sudden going through your pipes in your house. It literally explodes out of your kitchen faucet. It, it's really disastrous. So, to be proactive, I know you folks are already working on bigger issues. Our city water pressure is twice that of the maximum recommended, which is really significant, and puts a lot of pressure on that reducer all the time, which is why they finally blow. But I would like you folks to be proactive in a small way, I think it's an easy way, to simply send a letter to every landowner and to every resident in Montpelier, preparing us all for that possibility. If people could, if they know that they've lived in the house for 10 or 20 years, and they haven't replaced the reducer, they should probably just go ahead and do it. Also, you can put two reducers in line, so that if the first one taking all that pressure blows, the second one can take over. The third thing you can do is put a 100 PSI relief valve right behind the reducer, so if the reducer blows, the relief valve will go, and just your basement will be wet, not your whole floors of your house. So if you could write a letter to everyone and let them know, I, I feel like it would help citizens understand that, that we're acting as a community here to solve a bigger problem. The other thing to do is to let people know the warning signs, which I did not know. All of our toilets started to leak, you know, the little sound, that's actually a warning that your producer's going. And the other thing is things like, you know, beginning to get condensation or drip out of your hot water heater. So, I didn't know those warning signs. It would be so helpful if people could, and then just this sense that we're all working on it. Should also point out that the dirt from the first Loomis Street break was part of the problem. It gets into the reducer. So, just letting people know, if you've already had one break on your street, you should probably go and check your reducer. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna comment on that. Thank you, Sandy, and thinking about the possibility of including something in the water bills, that's easy, we include other letters in those water bills already, so that seems like that could be an easy thing to do, yeah. Cool, thank you.
Yep, I took a lot of notes on that. We are actually gonna be, the Public Works Director's gonna be addressing this issue tonight, but this is a great idea, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. The alternate side, I picked up a couple tickets on School Street. There's no marking. I was on the alternate side, following the rules, and there's no signs indicating that, why I'm getting tickets, you know. So I will challenge those tickets. But I have to question what the purpose of the alternate side parking is, when we have snow, and when we all park on the other side, we still don't plow. So, it's just, you really should suspend the alternate side parking if you're not gonna hold up your end of the bargain, you know? The whole purpose of it was to provide clear access to one lane at a time for plowing, but if you don't have the staff or whatever list of excuses you got, it's really unfair burden to put on the public. The MOU with the Transit Center is on the consent agenda, so I have to speak to it here. The Transit Center handicap doors are still not working.
Stephen, if I can interrupt you, I'd be happy to pull that item off, and then you could speak to that specifically during the consent agenda, if you'd like to speak to that then.
That's fine. So, yeah, if you'll pull that off, I would not have to try to compress it into this two minutes. Oh, Elm Street, I know that shim, shimming around the storm drains has not happened since we didn't get the quality we needed in our paving at the intersections, but Elm Street specifically is so rutted that the water accumulates there, and then it gets, the cars drive by and splash whoever's walking by, and/or it splashes up onto the sidewalk and freezes. And it, when that happens, it's not necessarily when there's salting and sanding going on everywhere else. It's, it's a specific problem of road standing water, and so it's a, it should be a priority to just shim those puddles on Elm. There's also some valves creating huge ice patch at the alley next to Three Penny. Your street supervisor recognized that it's, 'cause he said there's two receivers there, they're side-by-side storm drains, and that's unique, so that's a big problem. There was a yards and yards of glare ice bubbling up from a leaking meter. But I wonder why we got such a staff that, I'm the one that has to call this to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else with us in person wish to make a comment? Yes.
I'm Dan Toll, a Montpelier resident here on First Avenue, and I came here tonight for two reasons. The second reason is to just talk very briefly about the task force, the homeless task force project. However, the first topic I wanted to talk about is something very near and dear to my heart. As all of you know, I was part of the Montpelier Police Review Committee, got the opportunity to work under phenomenal leadership of Alyssa Sharon as the chair, as well as two of our illustrious town leaders, Jack McCullough and Lauren Carroll, fellow committee members, and of course, part of your council. But I'm not here to talk about the committee. I think you all have figured out what I, what I am here to talk about, and that's Chief Brian Pete. I can't tell you how long I cried when I heard Brian was leaving. Working with Brian during that, that Police Review Committee was, not that I've had a lot of interaction with the, with the law enforcement, but I can, I can tell you very honestly, I have not met a law enforcement professional in my 64 years, like Brian Pete. Consummate professional, in my opinion, someone who always takes, tries to take the high He's bright, he cares, he's a very compassionate human being, and I'm so sad he's leaving, but I know he's gonna do some great things in Kansas, and we'll be hearing about it, probably on, you know, he'll be, they'll be interviewing him on PBS, the nightly news, for all the great things he's doing for the Midwest. And maybe, but maybe he'll come back and visit us when he's, you know, this illustrious world law enforcement leader. So, I could stand here all night and talk, but I don't wanna get the one-minute sign from Donna. So, I will, I will, on this topic, I'll finish on the, on the note that, in honor of Brian, I brought two things tonight. Something sweet and something healthy and practical, which I'll leave in back, chocolate chip cookies and oatmeal cookies.
Very nice. Thank you.
Brian, big hand for Chief Pete. We love you, man.
We're gonna have a chance to roast him later on tonight, too.
What?
We're gonna have more chance to roast him later on tonight.
But I can't stay, because I have this big project I'm working on, so I have to go home and get to work. And on that note, I just wanted to give you a quick update. Bill and I have had several conversations about giving an update to you, and because of the budget, the intensity of the discussions tonight and next week on the budget, what we had talked about is Paul, my partner, and I are gonna be putting together, we are putting together just a very small handful of pages that's gonna be in your packet for next week. It'll be, it'll be there for you to review. I would love it if you could take a few seconds, a few minutes, to look, to see if there's anything that jumps out, that's missing, or that's missing, or you don't have questions. And if you would like me to come to public comment next week, I'm happy to, to answer questions. But in talking with Bill, what we decided is, we're gonna do a formal, a more formal presentation at the next meeting on January 11th. So that'll be the opportunity for us to give you a full update, and for you folks to have, for us to have a substantive dialogue, 'cause Bill said we're gonna be able to carve out some substantial time to talk about housing and more, and as importantly, homelessness. So unless you have any questions now, I'm gonna put out the healthy and the not-so-healthy and head home to get to work.
Well, thank you so much.
Oops, he's got, just pull it, it comes right out the top. It goes straight out.
Oop.
No, but it just comes right out.
There you go. Zach Hughes, Prospect Street, Montpelier. Two things tonight, and I may come back at another meeting on the other one, depending on how things go.
Can you just save me for a second, Zach? Steve, could you take that outside, please?
Thank you, sorry about that. All right, so the first item, I, I'm aware there's gonna be appointments on the restroom committee. Did wanna just give you all information that Carolyn, Carolyn Ridpath and myself were designated by Homelessness Task Force two years ago, so I don't know how that plays out, if, anyway, so that's okay. I wanna reiterate, 'cause you might hear comments about this from us, but for me, as a citizen, it's important to really work on this restroom thing. You know, we're, I know we've really been working on it, but there's been a couple years delay, but it's really difficult to find a bathroom once in a while, sometimes, and I just wanna lay that out there, I know we're doing that later. And the other thing I just wanna say is that I also wanna give my thanks to Chief Pete for all the work and all the work in the Montpelier Police Department and continuing the excellence of the department, and I hardly knew you, Chief Pete, but I will miss you, look forward to hearing the news exploits out of Kansas. And I'm aware of the joke about sending people to Kansas on the bus. We'll try not to do that, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else with us in person wish to make a comment? Okay. All right, so we're gonna go to folks who are with us digitally, and we'll start with Ken Russell. Go ahead.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name's Ken Russell. I live outside the environs of Montpelier, east of Montpelier, called East Montpelier. Thank you for letting me serve on your task force, the Homelessness Task Force. Come tonight, because our, our task force has wanted me to carry a message of urgency on the restroom committee work and the restroom work, and we've twice now passed a resolution this fall, and, you know, we're all friends here, and we're also working to get some stuff done, so appreciate Bill's good work on the committee, and there are some logistical challenges in making this happen, but we do are aware that this has been lingering for a long time, and we wanna express a strong sense of urgency at the highest levels in the city for getting this done. So, those are my remarks.
Thank you, Ken. We'll next go to Phil Dodd. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good to see you, and thank you for having this Zoom option available. I had comments in, in three areas. The first is about the Confluence Park. I read last week that estimates for building Confluence Park had doubled to 2 million, and Bill Frazier told me today the estimates are now as high as 3 million. I would urge the council to put the project on the shelf or cancel it. That's a lot of money for a tiny park, and its location means it would probably continue to be a hangout for the unhoused and little-used by the public. There are probably better uses for the money. Next, I found the recent VT Digger articles about the water system and its high pressure eye-opening and concerning. Having a water main break every other week on average is too often, and I have to think that the number of breaks will increase over the 50-year pipe replacement plan. Since the articles came out, I've had several people tell me they have had to recently replace the water pressure reducer in their house. One neighbor said the device cost him $200 plus $150 for plumber. This is a burden on residents. My suggestion is that the council consider appointing a citizen committee to study the complex issue and report back. The committee could talk to city staff, state regulators, experts, plumbers, and citizens. The more eyes we have on this, the better, in my opinion. My final comment is about the local option sales tax, which I see is on the agenda. I was a strong proponent of the local option rooms and meals tax, because it's a way for non-residents to help pay for our city services, but I'm not so sure about the local option sales tax. It has been turned down by voters two or three times already. It could adversely affect local merchants, who are still suffering the effects of the pandemic, since state workers have not returned to Montpelier. Given the number of delivery trucks I see in Montpelier, it seems likely that most of the revenue would come from residents, not non-residents. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. All right, Carolyn Ridpath, go ahead.
Carolyn Ridpath, and I live in Montpelier. And I have been on the bathroom committee since its inception along with SAC. And in the course of evacuation ship, numerous people have come to me and I've read in front of each forum, numerous concerns about bathroom facilities for a variety of different people in town, not just homelessness. That we have old people who would appreciate the facilities, we have visitors, we have downtown shoppers, we have people with little kids, everybody's got a little kid that had to go. So I think it's important to get that committee operating and working on this problem.
Thank you. Peter Kelman, go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to just add a couple of things on the bathroom issue. This has been seriously kicking around for a couple of years now. And I know how hard it is to get a committee up and running, because I've been on several of them. And I think this committee is not the only way to solve the problem. I think it should be, it should meet, of course. I would like to urge also that the city manager's office look into this independently or working with the committee, because there are a whole range of solutions that are possible. Some of them are going to take a longer amount of time, like doing a building, but some of them might take much less time, like talking to the state about using some of their existing buildings and having them be open 24/7 and maintained, and having that be the word out about that. Another thing is to talk to Montpelier Alive and get the merchants to open up their bathrooms to people who are not paying, they're paying customers. That's not, you know, not a requirement, but let's urge them to. You know, anyone who's traveled around the world will know that most towns or cities the size of Montpelier, and certainly every capital that I've ever been in, has enormous number of opportunities for people to use restrooms. It's actually a disgrace. And I don't think we need to wait for a committee to make recommendations, although, again, I value that. And Bill, I really think it is within your power to push ahead, and even the city, you know, if you read front porch forum, people think, oh, you can go to the police station. No, you can't, because the police station bathroom is not open to the public because of a lack of staffing. Oh, you can go to City Hall. Well, yes, but not when it's after hours. Let's open up the city buildings to more time. Yes, it's going to take some, you know, supervision, some maintenance, and so forth, but let's figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone with us digitally wish to make a comment?
Thanks, Zach.
Okay. All right, so with that, we're going to move on in our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and with the hope that maybe we can take off Item A. Thoughts? Or is there a motion?
Move.
Go ahead, Jack.
You want a motion to take it off? You don't need that. We don't need that. I move the consent agenda with the exception of Item A.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so Stephen, if you would like to make a comment on Item A, now's the time.
Thank you. It's a good segue from what you just heard from Peter and others. It's not been two years, it's not been a year and a half since the Toilets Committee. It was three and a half years ago that the Homelessness Task Force was formed, and toilets were one of their first priorities. The Transit Center is grossly underutilized, it's owned by the city, it's given to Green Mountain Transit for a dollar a year lease. Those bathrooms should be open 24 hours. I think we should not just update this MOU with $18,000 for, you know, Good Samaritan or whomever to staff it and clean it. We should take, Green Mountain Transit should have only the glass-enclosed cage. The city should maintain the entire building and keep those bathrooms open. One of those bathrooms has a five-inch sewer line running directly under the unused corner. A shower could be put in there very easily. And there's a, the lockers that were just a huge fiasco and waste, that we invested in lockers. So put a wall of lockers there, airport-sized lockers, where people could actually store a sleeping bag or a backpack. There's a picture in The New York Times of a hotel in New York that was converted. That, I'll be happy to forward that photo. But my point is that this is, we have not even maintained or insisted on enforcement of the lease terms to keep those bathrooms open between 11:00 and 2:30. So we're allowing them, without challenging them, to save money on employee benefits by closing the bathrooms when the lease requires them to be open. So they are in violation of the lease. We should cancel the lease or narrow their lease to the footprint of the glass cage and open those bathrooms and have the city take over management of that property. That's the most immediate, as well as the City Hall bathrooms downstairs. Immediate solution, and there's no excuse for dragging anchor on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jack?
Thank you. This issue of the Transit Center and what Green Mountain Transit's obligation is, has come up repeatedly in the past. I wonder if the manager could explain what the situation is with that.
So a couple of things. The city can't actually use that property for anything else other than transit, because it was funded by federal transit money. So GMT, even though we're the owner, GMT has really veto power over anything that's done in there, as does federal transit. The agreement with them is that they will maintain public bathrooms while they are present, to the extent that they're able to staff. And I think perhaps Stephen is right about why they're not staffing, but they get their funds from the state, and they are unable to, they don't have the financial resources to staff. We've asked them to staff fully. When they are open, the bathrooms are open. It's been an ongoing conversation with them, but we're not really in a position, it's an odd situation, that we're the building owner, but we don't really have the final say over its use.
So, we, unless we could prove that they are, that they're lying when they say they don't have the financial resources to operate it, we can't, there's nothing we can really do to force them to keep it open more hours. Thanks.
All right, is there further discussion or a motion?
I'm of Uy, approve the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a number of appointments to make, and I think we have, do we have any of them here? What I'd like to do is, if any of the folks who are here for an appointment would come up and introduce themselves, that would be great. So Elaine Ball, I don't see Elaine Ball with us in person, not sure about digitally. Okay, so Lucinda McLeod, you here. Okay, how about Mary Alice Bisbee? I don't see Mary Alice. Kim Ward. Jennifer Brown. Okay, and Maria Arsenless. Okay, all right, so we could go into executive session. We don't have to, but thoughts on appointments?
I move that we enter into, enter executive session to discuss the appointment of a public officer or employee on all three of those items pursuant to one VSA, Section 313A3.
And to be clear, we're going to be discussing all of those appointments. Yes, okay. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Peter Kelman, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to make an observation that the city council needs to make clearer to appoint, and we're the city manager, to people who are applying for committees, that it would be a good thing for them to show up at a meeting and to present themselves, unless you don't want them to. Look at this, nobody showed up, because it's not clear in the entire process. If you go to the website and see what's involved in applying for a committee, fill out this form, period. If that's really what you want, okay, but if you want people to show up and talk, you need, we need to do more to let them know that they should do that. And I think they should. Thank you.
So, yeah, okay, thank you. And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, we will be right back. Check, check. Woo, that is, okay, we're good. Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to come back into, back to public session? Yes, whatever.
To come out of executive session.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Is there a motion regarding appointments? Jack?
I move that we make the following appointments. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Elaine Ball; to the Planning Commission, Maria Arsenless; and to the Restroom Committee, to be clear that everyone knows what we're doing, that we reappoint all the current members of the Public Restroom Committee, and also further appoint Lucinda McLeod, Mary Alice Bisbee, Kim Ward, and Jennifer Brown.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Donna?
We will need to come back, because we didn't set any terms, and usually we have alternate terms on a committee.
Well, the Planning Commission has set terms. She's filling out an unfilled term, I believe.
Okay. The new restroom committee, I don't know if they have terms.
Right, we need to establish terms, right. Or it'll just be until the project's done.
But good call. That's good to note.
They're on until there's a bathroom.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, great. And thank you to all who put their names forward to serve. That's great. All right, so we're on to our FY22 audited financial statements, and I know we have some folks here to tell us about that, so come on up.
Doesn't usually take us anywhere to get to this part of the meeting.
Welcome. Yeah. Do you have a presentation? It's going to, okay. I may move so that I can see. Oh, it's bedtime.
I can time it. Just for the benefit of the council and the public, Kelly Murphy, Acting Finance Director and Assistant City Manager. And then with me, I've got RHR Smith, our auditor. This is Miranda McDonald and Ron Smith. And then online, Heather Graves, our Senior Accountant, is also available for questions. And so I'm going to hand it off to go through the audited financials. They will be posted online shortly. We have physical copies in the room, and I'll leave it to Miranda.
All right. Good evening. As Kelly said, my name's Miranda McDonald. Oh. Sorry, one minor, I'm going to share your screen. Thank you. Love technology. Well, we just completed our audit, and for your purposes, on page one, there's a letter, and it gives our opinion. And in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. So this is an unmodified opinion from, old language. The first schedule we're going to present can be found on page 17 of the financial statements. This is the balance sheet. Most people look at, you see the first column is your general fund, and you look at your fund balance. So for your general fund, your unassigned fund balance for FY22 is just a little over $2 million. Your non-spendable includes inventory prepaid, and then restricted and committed are those items that have been voted by your, the voters and y'all to reserve some of those funds. I do want to point out the capital projects. You have a non-spendable of $2.9 million, but then you have an unassigned. This actually is a timing issue with the purchase of the Elks Club, because in June, and then your capital asset rolls on the books in July of '22.
And you all will see that your unassigned fund balance went up about $400,000 from the year before, largely in part to favorable revenue over what your estimates were.
The negative unassigned fund balance in the other governmental funds is a direct result of the TIF. You sold bonds in July, so that will be funded in July, so this is as of June 30th. Scrolling to the next page, we just wanted to show you a yearly comparison of your fund balances. As you can see, the green color is your unassigned fund balance, and you have a policy that you, your goal is to have at least 15% of your budgeted expenditures. And it looks like you are budgeting and moving towards that direction. And this is the percentage of your general fund unassigned as it relates to your expenditures. So like we said, it's going up. FY20, we have to remember, that was COVID. Like, we can't forget that. The statements of revenues, expenditures, and fund balances, so this is going to show your revenues at $15 million for general fund and your expenditures at 12, and then you had some transfers out to different funds. So you increased your fund balance for your general fund by about $400,000, as Ron mentioned on the previous slide. I will say, like, capital projects, there was about $1 million. This year was a relatively easy year for y'all, because you opened up the sewer plant in FY21, and so it was relatively calm. So this is just a pie chart, puts it in perspective. For your revenues, about 75% of your revenue is through taxes. Intergovernmental is about 10%, that's going to be grants, and then charges for services, so your ambulance, police charges, some of those reimbursements that you have coming And then your expenditures, almost 50% is public safety, police, fire, you know, general government. General government is the 21%. That's going to be the city manager, finance. And then public works is streets and fleet operations as well. This chart, we wanted to show a comparison for 2022 to 2021. I would say the biggest takeaway I take is that everything's about even. Your, your revenues, 75% of it comes from your taxes. Public safety remains at 46% to 48%. General government is about 21%. So, so nothing dramatic, nothing really changed from one year to the next. So then we get to your proprietary funds. So this is going to be your water, sewer, parking, and district heat. What we're going to show in your fixed assets, like I said, it was a relatively calm year. You only put about $500,000 of infrastructure for water fund and sewer fund. The parking and the district heat remained relatively flat.
And I would say, just the one comment about your heat fund is it's still in the deficit situation of a little over $300,000, which is actually, I think, an improvement over last year, correct?
Correct, correct. As we look at this slide, you can see your net positions. The water and sewer both increased. Water by about 400,000. The sewer fund increased about 150,000. Your district heat, so while your overall net position for your district heat did decrease, your unrestricted actually improved. About $60,000 from last year to this year. And then this shows revenues and expenses for your proprietary funds. And this shows the variance in the net changes. So like we said, for your water fund, you increased it about 400,000. Sewer was about 126. Parking, last year, you actually zeroed out the fund balance and made it zero. And this year, you actually improved it by $200,000 for your net position. And then you can see the district heat decreased your net position by $150,000. This shows the comparison of your revenues with the proprietary funds. And you can see, you know, we're back up to the 2020 level. Twenty, the difference between '21 and
I turned the modem off and on, and that seemed to have made a big difference, period. If you guys want to log back into your meeting, I think everything's okay now.
So your water fees are up by about $400,000. And then your parking revenue fees that you collected was up by about $200,000 compared to '21 for '22. And then the expenditure side of it, you can see in '21, it was, it was high. In '22, it has decreased. Part of that is $400,000 in the sewer fund in supplies and treatment. And, you know, you opened up your sewer fund in '21. So that should have decreased some of your expenses in '22. And then your parking was down in the parking enforcement. So we wanted to put together a couple slides here that is actually a comparison with other entities. Berry, Shelburne, Montpelier, they're your size. And so what this is, is we're comparing their and y'all's unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. Just to see where you are compared to other towns your size. We did throw in South Burlington because right now, they're also in an investment or they're investing in their infrastructure during this time. And we know that that is a discussion that y'all are having, especially with your proprietary funds. So we wanted to throw South Burlington in there. For fund balances, y'all have a, you want a minimum of unassigned equal to at least 15%. South Burlington has, they have a minimum of one month, which is eight, about 8.33%, but their target is two months, which is about 16%, which is right in line with y'all. And then we couldn't find one for Shelburne and Berry. I do want to point out Berry Town, you know, in 2019 and 2020, they actually had a negative unassigned fund balance. You know, where y'all have actually been pretty steady and you're working to improve that to make sure you have your 15%.
We always refer to in our profession as 15% as a sweet spot, 60 days, two months.
Am I right that from one of those previous bar charts, that we're actually right at 16% now?
Right at 16%, right at 60 days, right where you want to be.
To the good, yeah.
Right where you want to be. And we put some comparisons on here. And I don't want you to think, here's what I always say, stay true to you. You know, don't compare yourself to other municipalities. You know, we talk about South Burlington or Shelburne or Berry. You know, they have other things too, you know, between reserve accounts, conscientious funding that they put aside, some other local tax, option taxes that they all have there. Stay true to who Montpelier is, though. And one of the things that I think, you know, that you'll see, you know, one of the, the common ground things that you'll see is infrastructures, Miranda said. There is a lot of infrastructure investment going on in the world of government right now.
Is that because of federal loans?
Well, you haven't seen them yet, from what this, the so, so, so last November
Can I interrupt real quick? Um, just if you're, if you're, I would love to capture all this for the folks at home. So make sure you're speaking into the mic. Thank you. So is she going to answer your question again?
So I was asking the question if the investment in infrastructure had to do with federal dollars.
Yeah, so, so last November, they passed a stimulus infrastructure package. It was like tagged as the Build America Back Again. And then it was tagged as the infrastructure package. That money hasn't filtered its way down until longer. The money's starting now to filter its way down. I don't think we're going to see it until '23, '24. You know, and there will be a lot of money available to government for roads and infrastructure needs. And that was what the whole package was designed to do.
And then in our last slide, we're comparing the debt that you have per capita. And then we compared it to these other communities. So I would say Berry, Shelburne, Montpelier, you're all right at the same size. And you're right at the same level of debt compared to these other entities. South Burlington, you know, they're two and a half times your size, but they still have a larger debt per capita. Like we said, they, they are investing right now in their infrastructure. And other, and they have a TIF. They have some other stuff that's going on as well with that.
That's the highlights.
That's what we got. Are there any questions?
I appreciate the glance of the comparison. I mean, you got to take it for what it is, but it's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We try to. And, and I think the biggest thing that I take away from that is, is I still maintain state of who you are.
I just want to come back to something that Jack highlighted. So, so we are meeting our fund balance policy right now.
Correct.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. It's like the first time since I've been on the council. For like 10 years. Wow. Yeah, I guess so. I guess so. Well, that's, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I want to thank Kelly and Heather and Todd for their work in the finance office. So it's always a pleasure to come here and work with them.
And I want to thank Miranda because I can't talk, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks. Oh, you may.
Steve, what did you hear again? I've got a question, being that 40 or 46 to 51% or something was public safety. I understand that our dispatch operation brings in some $400,000. I'm wondering why that isn't managed as a proprietary fund? Why is it lumped in with police work?
Generally, it's been a general fund. It costs about $1 million to run. It's an offset to the dispatching. Sure.
So, so anyway, as far as proprietary funds, self-sufficient. Supposed to be paid by the services they generate. And certainly, public safety wouldn't even begin to hit that target for any municipality, so.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Yeah. All right, so we are on to the Wrightsville Beach Recreation District presentation. And I believe we have some folks here from
Just one second there. I just want to thank the finance staff. Certainly thank the R and R for their report. But also Kelly, who's been under double duty here for some time, Heather. That's why I'm saying nice things about city staff, Steve, so you don't have to listen. I'd like to compliment the finance staff, Heather, Kelly in particular, who's been doing double duty, Heather, all of them, Tanya, Serena. I'm going to miss somebody, I'm sure, Crystal now, the folks that have worked there. Once again, we've had a clean audit with no exceptions and no comments. And that is not the norm for municipalities. I'm sure they would tell you that. And it has been our norm for quite some time. So they put, they're very, they take this work very seriously. And they do a really great job. So thank you to all the folks in our finance.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Well done.
Don't forget that.
It's a big deal. Please pass on our gratitude, Kelly. Yes, and welcome.
Is it okay for us to
Oh, yes. As long as you're all speaking into the mic. Yes.
All right, well, I'll start. Good evening, good evening, Mayor Watson. My name's Colin O'Neill. I'm the manager of the Wrightsville Beach Recreation District. Been so for about 21 years. To my right is John Copons. He's the, one of the two Montpelier Board Representatives. He was the treasurer up until recently. Dan Courier, he's also a board representative. And he is the current treasurer. So I did send a handout in last week. I don't know if it was disseminated to all of you. First of all, I want to apologize because I intended on having it be one page.
It's okay.
But I got a little wordy. Now, I think there was, there was a lot of detail that I really wanted to get in there for you. The three other towns, they did only get a one pager, though. And have you all had a chance to familiarize yourself with the information here? So so, yeah, we're here, I'll jump right to the, to the, to the chase here. We're here to seek an increase in the cap of the per capita that we assess all four of the district member towns. Currently, it's capped at $1.50. And we would like to increase that cap to $4. It's not that we're looking to jump to actually assess $4. Our intention is to assess $2.50 for Wrightsville's 2023 fiscal year, Montpelier's 2024 fiscal year. And then the plan stabilizes that assessment at 2.50 for a number of years. Any questions at this point?
So if I understand correctly, Montpelier's portion would go from $12,000 to about $20,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it would be an increase of about $8,074.
What is the assessment on the other towns?
Well, I don't have all of theirs here, but it's all based on their population. And it's all the per capita. So for East Montpelier, it's just under 3,000. For Middlesex, it's just under 2,000, I believe. Worcester is just over 1,000.
Is the per capita rate the same for every town?
Yes.
Okay. So, and it's, did I read, can hear that the other three towns have already agreed to raise the cap to $4?
Right, yeah, over the last month or so, I've met with the three other towns and they've all approved it so far.
And so then the intention would be to assess every town at 2.50 per capita?
Correct.
Any other questions for these folks at this point? Okay. So, thank you. I just want to speak to a little bit of the process from here. So, because this is a item that is usually in our budget. And we're going to take up first run at the budget this evening. We're going to include this as a part of our discussion together with all the other pieces as a whole. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Does that sound okay with you all? I mean, my, my thought is that we probably wouldn't be making a decision right, right now, but have the decision to include it in, in the budget with, with the rest of the budget discussion. Sound okay? Okay, and I realize that means that you don't get to, you know, like, it's not done right now. But, but I think it makes sense to do it all together.
That's fine. Would you like me to stay for that discussion?
Well, so there's going to be a couple of opportunities at least to have input on this. So if we come up with questions or objections even, or, you know, actually, I sort of assume that if people had questions or concerns, maybe they'd raise them now. But otherwise, I, I think we would have time between now and the next meeting to get in touch with you to ask questions if we had any.
You're always welcome to stay, of course.
You don't have to.
I'm getting hungry.
May I ask, so, Dan Courier? The, the timing for the Wrightsville budget is to try to approve it in December. So I absolutely understand the council's wanting to loop it into your own budget discussions.
That makes sense.
With our budget, because we're in a calendar year, we're trying to do it a little earlier than that. But what is your timeframe? Like, is it January that you'll have the final approval?
Well, so that's, that's a good question. So I'm jumping ahead a little bit. But talking about the budget, what I would like for us to do, and this is sort of a discussion we have to have as a council, but what I would like to see us do is to really get into some meat of it tonight and then be making some decisions at our next meeting for the, at the 21st. And if we can come out of the 21st with a budget that we're ready to take comments on, then we can move forward with the budget hearings in January. But then, of course, you know, our, our process goes from there. You know, it has to be approved by, like, there are, there is still an opportunity to make changes in, in January, of course. And then we wouldn't know if it was approved until March. But that's, that would be normal anyway. Like, that's what we would have done, I suppose, in any previous year. But theoretically, we could have an answer for, for our purposes generally by the end of December. Okay, yes.
Just one more comment.
Yeah.
So we just finished our 37th season at Wrightsville. And this is only the second time that we've come to the towns asking for an increase in that cap. We are very frugal.
I believe it. Donna, you had a question?
Well, I just wanted to hear from John and Dan, who's our reps. Some opinion and some influence. What would you like us to do and why? I mean, the letter is very factual, but I'd just like an assessment from you two.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here, right? We, as a, as a Wrightsville Beach Board, certainly approve this step of approaching all the towns. And us being here as a representation, that we do feel that these, you know, as Colin alluded to, we try to be very frugal as a board. We're really proud of the resource we have at Wrightsville. It's a treasure. It gets great utilization. And this approval of this increase in the per capita, I think really sets us on a solid footing moving forward. You know, one of the quirks about Wrightsville Beach, we're, we're sort of a municipality that's a gathering of four municipalities. We actually have no ability to take on any debt. So we basically have to pay cash for everything. So all of those improvements you see out there, and that's not easy for any entity, certainly not for a municipality. So like, that explains a little bit of our, our need for some additional resources.
I echo everything John said. And the other thing I'll add is, I mean, I've been off the board for a long time, just back on. It was a treat to come in and see, you know, a, you know, a little bit of funds in the checking account, right? And, and the goal to increase, you know, the, the membership. And so encourage new, new, you know, residents to come to Wrightsville. Because it is a jewel, right? And so And so, so, yeah.
Yeah, Donna, go ahead.
I bypass every year, I go at least once, and sometimes dozens of times, it's just very unpredictable, but I have seen the improvements, and I, I do enjoy it. I'm not sure enough Montpelierites know what a treasure it is, so we need to do some enticements to get more out there.
No, Donna, we need to keep it a secret. Everybody that uses it just needs to buy a membership.
It, it used to be a complete secret, so I've run it for 21 years. When I started, it was a complete secret, and it was a pit. This year, we had over 17,000 user visits and counting, because people are still out there playing disc golf.
It's amazing. Connor, go ahead.
Disc Golf Hall 6, those movies, a lot of constituents asking, you know, if that's going to be brought back to the original position. We can talk about it all.
Well, that was, that was a shift we made prepping for COVID, and it ain't going back. Sorry, you got to up your game.
Really hurting birdies.
All right, well, thank you, and, oh, yes, Jack, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking about, at the revenue breakdown, and it looks like you're, this past year, you're, 2022, you're, your user fees are about 60% of the budget, user fees are going down next year, because you're looking to get more revenue from taxes with the.
And grants.
Okay, okay, yep. Are you, is it possible to break down what the total proportion of revenues is from users in all the towns? Like, can, do you know how many, you know, since Montpelier, since 75% of your users are from other towns, does that translate directly into how much, what percentage of your revenue comes from non-residents of Montpelier?
I don't have the data broken down by town where people are spending their money other than season pass purchases. And we do, the way that we come up with that 75, 25% is we do random, random sampling throughout the summer of just asking people what towns they're from, but we, but when they're actually making a purchase, other than passes, and they're entering their address in our, in our logbook, we don't have that tracked.
Okay, thanks, because obviously, we're, we're, Montpelier's the biggest contributor of tax revenues, but probably not the biggest contributor to user fees.
Oh, yeah, by town, you're definitely the largest contributor by user fee. I mean, 25% of our business comes from Montpelier, and a huge percentage comes from Berry Town, Berry City, around the state of Vermont, and then per capita, Middlesex is pretty comparable to Montpelier, but overall use, Montpelier is far and above every other town.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, well, we will continue the discussion around this item when we can take up the budget, so thank you so much, and to be continued.
All right, pins and needles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are up to discussion on the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, and for this, I believe there's a report, though, I'm not sure, am I, Donna, am I looking at you, am I looking at?
You can stay there.
Sure, well, you can, doesn't, you can stay there if you'd like, up to you.
I'm, I'm speaking, though, from my Central Vermont Public Safety Authority Board hat.
Okay.
If I had a hat, I would have brought it.
Just, by way of introduction, when we first got word of the proposed budget, and some of the longer-term plans of CVPSA, I think both cities asked the CVPSA Board to come to this meeting and connect it with our budget process, just to understand what the, the financial thinking was, and I think since then, the Board's made some different decisions, so I think at this point, we're just seeking an update from them about where they're at.
Okay, Donna, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm going to try to be brief, and certainly take questions afterwards. I, you have been notified that at last Thursday meeting, the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority Board voted to advance a plan to dissolve the Public Safety Authority. It also voted to not request any funds this March at town meeting, and it will hold its published annual meeting next Monday, December 19th, at 7:00 PM remotely. And though I agree with these steps, I'm very disappointed that the cities and the surrounding towns have not committed to making a regionalized public safety service happen. In the last eight years, Public Safety Authority has really worked to increase coordination, training of dispatchers, improve the communication system, we've done studies, we have really felt we have nurtured the environment that has improved public safety in Central Vermont. But understanding that, and knowing maybe this is the time for this particular organization to no longer exist, I'm still very upset that the negative actions of a few, a couple, actually individuals, could damage Central Vermont Public Safety Authority's reputation, that the consistent negative comments override eight years of putting good action out to support public safety. And so I really want people to know that the Board itself is pleased with all the support we've gotten from the city staff, the public safety individuals, the city managers, the councils have been very accessible. We're, we're sorry that we didn't find the total buy-in that was needed to make the Public Safety Authority really valid. But I do encourage this city council, as I did last night in Berry City Council, to really look at public safety expenses, and maybe the whole operation, to be separate from the general budget, especially when it comes to equipment, training. I mean, we fit a niche, the public safety autho, services in both cities kept reducing their requests on the general budget, and they didn't have money for training, they didn't have money for, to improve the trans, the communication equipment. So, you know, when public safety equipment gets right in there with, oh, we want 2% increase in tax, and that's it, it loses. And the one thing the Public Safety Authority did was take it out and look at public safety needs by itself, and make it a priority. And the voters supported us every time, when we asked to do a study, they supported us. And I think they would support the cities, if you could be bold enough to ask for it, because this equipment that we have this grant coming in of 2.4 million right now, isn't enough. It's enough to get us over the hump of the old towers, and the wiring, and the links, definitely, other grants will bring in new radios, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be purchased, and then it needs a commitment of setting aside funds to maintain that equipment, to replace that equipment, so we never get in this big hole again. The initial need was some 3, 6.4, and we're not asking for everything within the need assessment that's listed as equipment that we need to really service the regional area. So the 2.4 is beginning, 2.4 million, in this case, people don't know, that's an M behind it, really, it's just the tip of the iceberg. And so I really hope the city councils can commit themselves to look at public safety a little separately, and perhaps put it out to the voters separately, and you'll find support for it. And I'm here to answer questions. Oh, Berry City Council, to also let you know, last night, because the way it was on the agenda, they felt they couldn't do a vote, but they did a straw vote, and they are planning to bring it on their next council meeting, to with, put on the March ballot to withdraw from the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. So that's the latest update that I have.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, so we have this 2.4 million dollars, does the entity need to continue to exist while that money is expended?
Very interesting. At the December 8th meeting, when the Board made the motion to actually move to dissolve, there was requests coming from the Twin Cities, that when they did this application with the Department of Public Safety for all the new dispatch equipment, the state has decided to distribute all the towns they've been doing previous free dispatching on, and they have asked Berry and Montpelier to take on more towns in their dispatch centers. And the Twin Cities, both Berry and Montpelier, need an impact analysis before they say yes. And so the Public Safety Authority got a quest of $25,000 to do another study. Now, the study is needed, so I'm smiling, because we have the money, because we've asked the voters for it, and, and the cities could have the money to do these studies, if you ask the voters for it. So the Public Safety Authority hasn't approved that, it'll be considered at the 19th meeting, but we would definitely put that money back into public safety. And once, if indeed we allow, we allot that 25,000, we'll have about $5,000 that we assumed, again, it'll go back to the cities and public safety in some way. Now, we are exploring with the LIG, who we are a member, the Vermont League of City and Towns, and legal advice, to actually read the charter, because everybody has a little different opinion of some of the language there, exactly in dissolving, and whether or not, if indeed, like Berry puts that on the ballot, and if Montpelier decides to put it on the ballot to withdraw, and the voters agree, does it take a year or not? The charter says a year after the citizens' vote, you, you can leave, but that's assuming you've got some financial buy-in, commitment, investment that needs to be dealt with. We don't have that in this case, so we may be able to modify some of that.
Okay, but it's.
To answer your question, Madam Mayor, the application was not made by the CVPSA, for the, that grant was made by the city of Montpelier on behalf of the two cities.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had my this grant. Montpelier was the, yes.
Okay. Can I answer the essence and?
Because the Public Safety Authority didn't have the capacity to take on a grant like that, and which is, Montpelier stepped in to do that, which we're very thankful for.
Yep. Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Other questions, then I know some folks may want to make some comments. Any other questions from council at this point? Okay, comments, go ahead.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. People get crazy when there's big money in the trough, so it's important to note, this money, the 2.4 million that you're referring to, the city applied for 3.6, it's not a sure thing by any stretch, it's conditioned upon meeting a governance requirement that there's a lot of wishful thinking going on. The, the city has convened, the managers and chiefs have convened this, quote, you've heard, Twin Cities Group, that's operating outside of public records, open meeting law, and it is not meeting the threshold of governance of the served towns. So it may be that CVPSA is the vehicle by which we can be eligible for these funds, but even so, these funds, the 2.4 million, is only about half what the system is projected to cost, and there's no plan, there's no documents of where the other 2.4 million's going to come from, or the increased operating costs. And the towns that are currently served, there's 18, 22 of them, something around there, that are currently served by Montpelier Dispatch, have not been made aware or have an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they want to sign contracts for unknown escalating rates. So this thing is a house of cards, it's been sabotaged from within the, the Board. The interpretation of the current chair, that we don't have to adhere to the charter, the charter is law, the charter says you will have an executive director, you will have an audit, you will record your meetings, the charter doesn't say that, but state law says that, when they're virtual only, and all of those laws are disregarded by this chair. And, in fact, I had asked for, I believe you've been misled about what happened at the meeting, one of the people explicitly stated that he voted in the affirmative specifically for the purpose of reserving the right to move to reconsider, okay? And unfortunately, due to the fact that the chair of CVPSA has refused, this is not a two-minute, one-minute thing. The chair refuses to record the meetings, therefore, I have been unable to get a recording in time to provide transcripts of Jim Ward from Berry, Doug Hoyt, and others that have real reservations about disbanding it, especially at this critical time, where we're on the potential of accessing some substantial money from the, both the general fund and federal funds. So the problem here is that there's no expertise. Fred Cummings moved on to wherever he went. There is no expertise in the fire service or the police of, of radio expertise, we're totally dependent upon vendors. And the equip, the analogy I would use is, we wouldn't expect the meter maids to do street engineering, right? They walk, walk the streets and write tickets, but we don't expect them to do the street engineering. You don't, we don't expect the firemen, probably the highest users of water, to engineer the water maids. Here's a problem of a non-engineered multimillion-dollar system that is being co-opted without proper governance. And Central Vermont Public Safety Authority was formed to be that governance, and unfortunately, the charter gave towns the impression that it was going to take over their services, that it was going to be one unified county-scale police and fire system, and that all their individual departments would be absorbed into it.
So Stephen, you're at four minutes now, if you could wrap up your comments?
Well, I, I, I can't wrap them up, because there's more than that. I don't believe that the two minutes should apply here, this is an issue that you've been post, kicking down the road for many meetings, and now it's reached critical.
No, so this is still public comment, and the rule still applies, so if you would wrap up your comments, that'd be great, thank you.
I will, again, protest that the, challenge the legality of your, if you really don't want to learn about the decisions you're about to make, or that you're being asked to make, that's typical.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Kim Genie here, I live in Town Street, Montpelier. Where things stand on the grant is in the legislature, and you, and you will probably have a big say in how this works out. What I would like to see is simply, we're not asking you for any money for the coming I don't know how we're going to evolve how the governance section works out, and I don't think anybody does, because the Public Safety Commissioner asked for, can't remember the number, several hundred thousand dollars to get a staff to study what kind of a plan to solve a problem they've been working on for over 50 years, which is how to allocate state and regional governance. And she has said, and it makes sense to me, if local people evolve something that works for them, we're not necessarily going to impose a cookie cutter that everybody has to fall into. On the other hand, the grant requirements were very specific. They said you had, the city in this case, would have to have contracts with 10 different entities. And the only outfit I know with those kind of contracts is Shelburne, and they're making it work, I don't know if they have 10. And I don't know, I don't think anybody knows how all this is going to work out. So my plea is, let's wait the year out, leave the charter in place, it'll be kind of dormant, and if that, I've made some suggestions for how the charter could be amended to be a little more friendly to some of the users, etc. to be a little more friendly to some of the users, et cetera. Whether they'd be acceptable or not, I don't know. Chief Pete said that they were looking at it the last time he was with the general, the DPS committee that's studying this. So I would like to just see this. The only action I think we need is for you to approve... You've heard the budget. The budget will come out, it'll be zero. And I should add, I don't think there's enough votes for dissolution. But I don't know. I was surprised last time, so I never know how they're going to come out. So I think it's kind of wait and see, and the only action that's before you, I think, is to hear the budget, and there it is, zero for your contribution to coming here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Justin Dreschler. Can everybody hear me okay? That's much better. Justin Dreschler, CVPSA. I am the current Secretary of the CVPSA and the Montpelier Rep. I am the one who moved to dissolve the CVPSA. It was my motion. It's been my push. If anyone is to blame, it should be me. I think that this has been a long time coming, and it took someone who doesn't care what people think of them, or the consequences, to actually do it. And so that's why I put it forward. A couple of things. Whitaker is right, that Jim Ward did not vote to dissolve the CVPSA. Jim Ward voted in a very, very wishy-washy way. So we had a non-binding resolution to prepare a dissolution plan that we could then vote on later. So Whitaker's right about that. Doug definitely expressed reservations, although I would characterize them as disappointment more than reservations, like disappointment with the process. To me, so Kim is also right that this, you have this CVPSA. Somebody's got to govern something eventually, maybe, right? I guess is what we have here. I just happen to think that it will never be CVPSA. Montpelier itself has more or less said they're not going to work with CVPSA. Capital Fire has outright said they will never work with CVPSA. My understanding is the Barry City Council meeting last night was quite contentious. I was not there. I find it distasteful that they were throwing around people's names as having sabotaged the CVPSA and been the real problem. This is a committee that tried very hard. Donna worked her ass off for years. You can see all the work that she's done. Kim worked his ass off for years. Whitaker has worked as hard as anybody on this thing. It's just that people disagree. And you don't have to say that someone ruined something. Something can just not work. And CVPSA just does not work. And I don't see any way for it to ever work without buy-in. There is no buy-in. Anyone who's ever been in a leadership position will tell you, it's the only thing that actually matters is people believing in you. Nobody believes in this committee. And it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. Last thing I want to say is, I found it very unsettling when the Capital Fire came to our most recent meeting and asked us for $25,000. This is an organization that said they're never going to work with us. Montpelier has more or less said they're not going to work with us. Barry has more or less said they're not going to work with us. I can understand why that drives Whitaker absolutely fucking nuts, and why he refers to CVPSA as the piggy bank, excuse me, absolutely effing nuts.
Thank you.
I apologize. Why Whitaker refers to CVPSA as the piggy bank for these towns? Because it certainly feels like that, when someone, when an organization tells you that you're no good, and then they come to ask for your money because they don't have it. That said, it's really important money. It's really important work. It needs to be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with us in person wish to make a comment about this? Anyone else with us digitally wish to make a comment? Okay. Well, first of all, I want to just acknowledge all the work that's gone into this organization over the years, and I am very grateful for all the work that you have done. And, you know, it seems to me that, at least where I'm at right now, is that I think I agree with the recommendation. And just in terms of the process, if the council agrees as well, I think what we could do is potentially have a motion to recommend staff to prepare some kind of language that could be approved for the ballot, because it would take a ballot item to dissolve it on our part, or for us to step out of it. But I think we're not at the point of actually putting that language on right now, but we could ask the staff to create that language. But that's just my opinion. Other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
I'm in the same place. One thing I would love to get and understand, if, you know, assuming we move forward with this, it is dissolved, you know, clearly there was a vision and goals here, and like, what are we going to be missing out on? And if we're going to look to maintain the collaboration, and, you know, maybe there's some future differently constructed iteration of this? And so, like, I would love to understand, you know, what value has there been? And like, what might we want to recapture in some other way? Or are there things that the cities are going to have to take on that CVPSA's been doing? It's not entirely clear to me, like, what exactly we're going to be missing by dissolving this, and just like, having that understanding, and like, a memo that then we can reflect on and look for, you know, where do we go from here? Either just as a city and working in partnership with the other, you know, regional communities, or do we at some point think that a different, you know, organizing entity is needed? And what would that structure be, and kind of what didn't work about this structure, so that we can have lessons learned?
Is that something that...
We could certainly have...
You could create that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably not till after we get done the budget, but we could do that. I would like to just make a couple of comments, if I could, just in response to some of the comments we just heard. Number one, just with regard to the comment about funding, all of the funding for CVPSA comes from the city of Montpelier and the city of Barry. They're the only two funding sources. So for those two cities to seek that money to be returned to them for a project they're working on jointly, that has been supported by CVPSA, I'm not sure I would characterize this as going to the piggy bank. I would say seeking our own money back to do a project that we've done. And I would say that, I can't speak for anybody else, I would say the city of Montpelier has not said we would not work with CVPSA. In fact, we work closely on designing this project. I'd point out that the main beneficiaries of the project we're talking about are the regional towns, who are non-members. So the cities of Montpelier and Barry put a lot of work into this, so that we can have better regional telecommunications systems. We worked with CVPSA to create the design of the TeleVate study, to review that, and have, you know, appreciated all they've done. We've taken advantage of the training. Certainly, our relationship with the city of Barry has never been better, and I think a large of that is due to CVPSA. I would say that the city has been clear, that at least as currently constituted and with what is available, that we were not interested in consolidating services or giving up our services to another entity until we felt confident that our residents would have the same or improved services. So I just want to be clear, the city isn't, this city at least, has never said we're going to take our ball home. When this was first formed, when it was first being talked about before, Mayor Hooper, Mayor Holler, Mayor Watson all said, "We're interested in this, but not just to save money. We want, if we're not getting better service out of this, we're not interested." And that's always been the guiding principle from the city. So I think we appreciate the work, and I agree with Mr. Dreschler that I'm not sure there is a huge amount of confidence, for whatever reason, right or wrong, deserved or not. And I'd be happy, we can certainly have an agenda item in the future about this grant process, the project, who's involved, the conversations that have been held with the neighboring towns about what they're getting into, and the agreements that are being made on that. But that is another, so I think it's up to you what you want to do with the authority itself. I just wanted to make clear that many people have spoken truths tonight, and that's great. The money came from the cities. They wanted it back. The cities have put themselves out to serve the entire region, as well as CVPSA.
Other comments from the council? Yes, go ahead.
There was several interesting questions out of the Barry City Council, and one sort of relates to Lauren's. And that is, the cities weren't ready to succeed any authority. They weren't ready to appoint their own public safety staff to the board, which was the expectation. So they always stayed a little back. And I think with the state now putting out a grant, and the attitude of regional dispatch centers, the cities will get guidance. And you'll develop a format that works, because it is in the future. Vermont is going to statewide regional systems. So I really think it's a waste of time to spend anymore on why we failed. You know, we achieved some things. It wasn't what we aimed, but that often happens. But we did achieve some things. So I think the public safety is ahead. I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend the time, Lauren.
Is there a motion? Hold on a second. I'd like to see if there is a motion. Yes, Jack?
I'm going to direct city staff to produce a resolution that we can go to the voters to exit or dissolve the authority.
Second. Okay, motion and a second further discussion. And anything, anything more? Okay. In that case, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and opposed? All right.
Should I abstain?
I don't think you need to.
Okay. Aye.
Okay. All right, and just to check again, any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. And, gosh, please pass along our gratitude to everyone on the committee.
And Doug Hoyt isn't here, but he's been on...
He's with us digitally.
I'm sorry, I didn't see him there since 2014, and it needs to be... He applied a lot of past experience, very, very helpful member of the board.
Yes, thank you. Okay, all right, so we are going to move on to the... Oh, yeah, it is 8:30. Okay, so, yeah, we are going to take a 10-minute break. It is 8:28 right now. We're going to say we'll be back at 8:40, which is actually 12 minutes. Okay, thanks. Okay, so it is 8:40. We're going to come back from our break. One of the things that we neglected to do was accept the report of the audit. Is there a motion to do that? Yes.
I'd make a motion that we accept the audit that was presented.
Okay, motion and a second further discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. All right, and so I think we're ready to discuss the budget.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Go tonight, you've received the line-by-line detail of the budget. I believe we're going to be getting the budget book. Okay, how's that? Is that better? I don't know. How's that? Is that right? No, it's too fuzzy. How's that?
Perfect.
Perfect. We like perfect. Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to present the budget. The goal tonight, so what was I saying? You've received the budget overview letter, which kind of describes what's really in the nuts and bolts of the budget. You've received the actual line-by-line detail of the entire budget. You should be getting the budget book by the end of the week, which just has more graphs and those types of things. That's being completed. Near this year, between now and your meeting next week, we will be, we're doing individual videos of each department. Department will be making a presentation as if they were sitting here, just going through the key aspects of their budget. Those will be on video, hopefully by the end of this week, up on YouTube for all of you to see, as well as members of the public. And that way, next week, you could just ask questions if you chose, instead of having to hear the whole presentation here. So that's still coming. This presentation tonight is really meant to provide a high-level overview of the budget. We've got key staff here, if you have questions about any aspects of it. I know the mayor had indicated she wanted to get into some meat of it. I think, obviously, from our perspective with staff, the biggest question is, is the overall level of the budget where you want it? Would you like to see more or less, et cetera? Because that will define what we do over the next week. And then, obviously, how you move things around within it if you choose to. So as we prepare the budget, we talked about this a little bit earlier. Our goal is always to implement the strategic plan that we spend a lot of time on. We have talked a lot about our staffing. We are getting there. Most of our departments now are getting near full, with the exception of the police department, although they are making some strides. They're not as less, not as unfull as they were. It's to continue our investment in infrastructure, to deliver responsible services, and stay within the 7.7% inflation rate, which is what it was when we started this process. We did get new information that it's now at 7.1%. So just so people are aware of that. So going through our strategic plan, just trying to hit some of the key elements of the budgets for you to see. In the improved community prosperity, we increased the economic development funding from $50,000 to $100,000, with the idea that it would be entirely earmarked for the Country Club Road project. We need the money for that project anyway, but we felt, long run, this would then restore the funding for economic development going forward. We retained the $45,000 for the Homelessness Task Force. We've got the $134,150 for the Community Fund, which was last year's amount. $32,600 for the Montpelier Alive, and $10,000 for the Montpelier Arts Fund, Community Arts Fund. Under our "Provide local, responsible, and engaged government", we're going to, we'll talk a little bit this more, about this more under ARPA, and Kelly can give you some more detail. But given the constant struggles we've had with microphone sound, et cetera, we've gotten some pricing to upgrade this room. We can do that actually relatively quickly. We're going to propose actually to use some ARPA money for that. It's been a constant battle, and to try to modernize this room, recognizing we're going to be doing probably hybrid meetings and the like from now on, and to approve that. We have the ADA Transition Plan projects, which for this year is largely the elevator in the city hall. We put money in last year. We've got funds in this year. We are budgeted for fully-staffed city departments, including the new position you improved last year on sustainability, and taking our part-time communications coordinator position to full-time. We've kept the $20,000 in for the Committee's stipend program, $10,000 for Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee, and $15,000 for Legislative Advocacy. Those were all new in the last year or so, and we're at sort of initiatives of the council. We've kept those in. Create more housing. We've put in $110,000 for the Housing Trust Fund, with the idea that it would, again, all be earmarked for the Country Club Road project. And I'll be talking about more of that a little bit later tonight, but we are, you should be receiving a written update on that project soon. And I'm going to mention this in my manager's report, but so you have time to think about it. We had suggested that maybe January 18 might be a budget workshop night. They've asked that we instead, if you're not still working on the budget, that we have a workshop night on the CCR project, Country Club Road, so that you can see the early drafts, and then, and get a handle on their initial findings. So that is moving along, with the idea that maybe, within the timeframe that had been laid out, the council would be approving, and the community would be approving, the vision for this project. Practice good environmental purchase stewardship. We are looking at some of our first truck purchases, electric mower purchase. You've heard from Chris Lambra about some of the actions. So we are looking at converting the DPW complex to renewable, and that will require reworking the bond language. Last year's bond language talked about a series of projects, and specifically mentioned pellet burner. So if we want to have more options, such as using the methane heat, those kinds of things, we need to rework the burner, excuse me, the ballot language. We'll be coming forth with a proposal on that. Capital needs assessment. This is a longer term, taking a look at all of our, doing an assessment of all of our projects, of all of our capital assets, excuse me, to determine where we need to make the improvements for sustainability. Continuing the funding for My Ride. Confluence Park is another. You heard from a resident today. The price keeps going up for that, so I think the plan for that is to continue, to finish the design... the design work, have it come to the city council with the updated design and the updated cost estimates, and then you would make a decision whether to delay, to cancel the project, what you want to do. But also, that is, the $600,000 that was included in that larger bond, when we think about reworking that bond, we might want to have some flexibility for that as well. That could, because if you chose not to go forward with it, it could conceivably be reallocated to housing resources, or completely redoing the DPW campus to make it net zero. There are a number of things. We certainly have no shortage of capital and community needs that that could be reallocated to. And lastly, we are proposing the Stormwater Utility, that you've heard about that, will also require a charter change. I'll hear more about that next week with some draft language, but that's coming. To build and maintain sustainable infrastructure, we've maintained a total $2.149 million capital plan funding that was, we had last year. We met with the capital committee and an extra earlier today, and our goal really had been to get that number to 2.4 million this year, or at least something between 2.15 and 2.4. But given the constraints of trying to stay even at 7.7%, or actually at 7.4 where we ended up, that seemed very difficult. We still have ARPA funding, which we'll talk about. The REC Center is a huge need, and that's where we're doing the future planning of the Country Club Road. Reminder that even though these were all approved last year, we will be doing this work in the coming year, $7.2 million, starting on East State Street. That'll actually be for a couple of years. The Berry-Maine intersection will be getting done, the streetlight improvements, these are all funds we approved last year, but it's still work. In addition, there's a CSO project on State Street that'll be done, which will result in, you know, paving after that. And the state is paving Route 2, all, the length of it, from the creamy stand to the wayside. So while that is not our project per se, that is a huge investment in new paving in the center of the community. So there will be a lot of work done even, although not as much as we would like, probably. Improve health and safety, we'll continue funding for the body-worn cameras, which started in FY '23. And I'm sure the police department can explain this better than I can, but we are putting in a new policy management platform for the police. This is an increase, a new initiative. We are supporting K-9 Unit. Our dog Atlas just came out of training. I met him tonight. And he will be out. He is a very young working dog, and will be carefully managed, but is right now specifically on tracking lost items and people and those kinds of things. And again, Chief can explain more about that. And we've done a lot of work on planning of the Crisis Intervention Team Program, and this would be moving forward toward implementation of that. So taking a look at the capital improvements plan, you can see our total funding at the bottom in FY '23 was 2.149, 165, and that's what's proposed for FY '24. That's the good news. And then in FY '25, you see 2.4 million. That's where we had hoped to be. That had been the level we were at pre-pandemic, and we're trying to get back to that. The bad news is because of the debt we've taken on over the last year, you can see that the debt went from 7.16 in FY '23 to 1.1, almost double, not quite, in FY '24, dropping the annual amount from what, a little over a million to just $640,000. So that's really what results in less work this year being done. But remember, those debt payments reflect all those big projects we just talked about. So we are, money this year is being invested into infrastructure. It's just not as what we call pay-as-you-go, or annual money, it's in debt money. Our goal, as you can see, is to get, you know, next year to be at 2.4 million, and then to slowly continue to build that up on an annual basis, so that we can keep track and hit the so-called steady state. I'm not going to go into this in great detail, but you can just see really the different programs that are going in. The biggest project is the Grot Road Bridge, which has been in planning for a while. We had $330,000 in last year's budget. We've got $200,000 in. We received a $175,000 grant. This is a bridge that is failing. You can't put a fire truck across it. Those particular homes are on wells. You can't get a well drilling rig across it. It's, and it's been failed now for a few years. It's time that we, we need to do that. The sidewalks, those are our match for that Route 2 paving project. Upgrade sidewalks and do things along the way. And IT, again, these are things that we need to do. Buildings and ground, as I mentioned, the $100,000 for the elevator. And so you see the big thing is the drop. Last year we did, or excuse me, we had a huge amount, $875,000, which would be our goal to pave each year, and certainly have a lot less funding for paving next year. Again, recognizing that we have a lot of work that was, will be done, and we did over a million dollars' worth of work this year. So we are a little bit ahead of the game, and I'll talk a little bit more about other potential funding sources for that. And just in equipment, again, you can see this here, we don't need to go through this in detail unless you have questions for the appropriate department head about these. One of the, these, both of the equipment and the capital plans do have multi-years to them. I think just a reminder that you've heard before, the biggest ticket item coming in the future is a new ladder truck, which is 1.2 million. It will be eligible for grant funding in another year or so, which is why we've been putting it off, but that will be a large, again, bond purchase that we would make, which would impact this fund, but it is not included in this year. Just taking a look at our ARPA, so as you, you can see, we had 200, $2.2 million. The column on the left is where we have allocated that funding. So you can see it's pretty much all allocated, except for 3683. And you can see the $50,000 for the upgrade to this room, and $20,000 for district heat connections. Those are things we are proposing this year. Those would be to help individual people connect to district heat, which would help. Everything else is things that you've already allocated, and to the right is just what we've actually spent so far in each of them. So they're still unspent funds, but they are in, you know, they are in certain categories. So again, you can see there's still $300,000 in road and bridge work left to go. There's still some equipment purchases left to go. So while our capital plan isn't what we would hope, some of this work is still being done through ARPA. And we still have the big ticket item of $425,000 for awaiting the, the, the report from the homelessness task force. I would add that we did take a look at using some of this funds for public restrooms. You heard the demand for that, there's no question about that. And just to respond to some of the comments that were made, I have withheld creating any initiative, administrative initiative on that, waiting to hear what the recommendation of this, if, if there's a, if there's a use for this $425,000 that is other than public restrooms that would meet a need for unhoused people, then I want to make sure that gets fully vetted, rather than we somehow grab this money, build restrooms, and then we don't have enough to deal with that population. So I, could we advance this faster than the committee? I think so, but I also think we need to hear all the options on the table before we get to that. Oops, I don't know what that was. Oh, what am I doing here? Something. So we did have two surveys this year. We had a sort of an informal, unscientific budget survey, which I forwarded to you, and they only had three or four questions. So 99% Motley Rives residents responded with 268 responses. The top answers were not surprisingly, infrastructure, public works, public safety, and housing. There was certainly, 52% did not support tax increases, but you know, 48% were either yes or undecided. So clearly, we got a message there, but we have to balance that, of course, and let you know. And then you heard, then again, 44% felt some departments should be reduced, and some supported our budget, some didn't know, some thought there should be some increase. So again, that was an unscientific snapshot, but still a valuable piece of input. We probably won't get 268 people coming to these meetings, so it's a way to hear from people. Similarly, we had a complete national citizen survey conducted. We did get 700 and some odd responses. That was, was statistically significant, and all those results you've seen, they're all on the website, and they are, there's also tabs by income, age, homeowner, any number of demographics, so it's very interesting work. And they also ranked the, the services in order. And we can certainly do more on the survey, but didn't want to take up too much time in this meeting, but just note that we, we have had surveys, we are publishing them and putting them out. So bringing this all in, when you take a look at where the city budget is, net of revenues and everything else, including the ballot items that you have already approved, we are at about a 7.4% increase. So we were, we're proud of ourselves for coming in under 7.7, but now we're over 7.1. So there's that. Obviously, there's a list of items that were requested, not just capital, that are in the package that we did not, were not able to fund, and now we have an additional 8,000 requests from Wrightsville tonight. So obviously, those would be the kinds of things for you all to discuss. Water and sewer rates, we are budgeting for this, and again, we're going to talk a little bit later. Kurt is going to give you an update on those, and what kind of money we're putting in those budgets for capital improvements. But as per policy from the council, we are proposing 1% over inflation. Again, we may need to adjust the, the 8.7 to 8.1, but that is following the council's policy, so that we can set money aside for infrastructure improvements. So at this point, we can take questions, I can take questions. There are specific questions. We have several department heads present. We are planning to talk about this next week. We had set aside the fourth, if needed, for budget workshop. Mayor says we're going to be done next week, so I believe her. Public hearings will be held on January 11th and the 26th, and just remind everybody, the 26th is a Thursday. That's the night for final adoption and inclusion of any of these ballot items, including these, the potential ballot item on CVPSA, potential ballot items reworking bonds. And of course, there's a separate time change, timeline for charter changes, but they would also have to be included at that point. We will have the interactive spreadsheet on the website and here for council meetings, so that as you make decisions, we can see how that works. And that's really the high-level presentation on the budget. Like I said, we can get as into the weeds as you'd like, or as high above the clouds as you'd like on this conversation. So that's all I have, and I'll move back up there, and we'll start taking questions, unless there's anything in here you'd like me to go back to, to review. All right, then. I'll stock my share. I think that was the right thing to do.
Well, so, oh, sorry, go ahead. Well, first of all, just thank you, and please pass on my gratitude to all the staff that helped put this together. So, one of the key questions is, are we at the, generally the right level? And then if we want to get into any further detail, we certainly can. So thoughts about any of those things? Comments in general? Go ahead.
Just a question first. Do we have any information yet from the school district on just like the overall impact to voters?
We don't have anything official, what we, Kelly, would you like to answer that question? No, I mean, you're the one that saw it, so I'd rather have you give more accurate information.
So Bill's probably, this is what he was going to say, I hope, is that we, we do have information from the school. Their budget is, is down. They're actually projecting a decrease right now at this point, but they're still in deliberation, so we don't know what the actual impact will be yet. And I do have a question out, or a conversation, request for a conversation with the business manager. She did get back to me, but I didn't have the chance to connect. So hopefully, in advance of the meeting next week, I'll have more information, and hopefully we can kind of run the rough calculations of, you know, where they're at right now currently. I'm just not sure where they'll end up. And so I'm a little hesitant to kind of give any information at this point, because it certainly is favorable. I will say that.
Connor?
Local options on the ballot, it passes. 1.65 million in revenue. What does that bring the 7.4 down?
So if that, we'll put it on the ballot and to pass, we, you know, at this point, we can't assume any of that revenue, because we don't know, first of all, whether or not you're going to put it on the ballot, and we don't know if it's going to pass. We don't know for sure if the legislature will pass it once we've passed it, although they certainly seem to be doing so routinely now. Our experience with the rooms, meals, and alcohol tax was that it took them about half a year to get it up and running before we started seeing money. So the, well, it's not insignificant. The most we would see would be about half of that revenue in this year. So I was going to mention that when we got to this, but that might be a place where we could then backfill some of the capital needs that we had hoped to. You know, it'd be kind of a budget windfall, or some of these other projects, whether it's for homelessness, or bathrooms, or those kinds of things. But I recall when, and you may, you, you also may have the discussion when we talk about that item, if you choose to go ahead to put it on the ballot, being dedicated for certain uses. I know the last time it was dedicated for economic development and, and infrastructures, and that's, you know, what we've been technically using it for. So I think those are all, all possibilities. What happened when we did do, I think Mayor Watson and Councilmember Bate will remember, when, when we did finally get projected, we brought it to the council, and then they actually appropriated the money at that time for half a year of what they were going to use it for. So sometime, you know, at this time next year, we'd be sitting here saying, okay, it looks like it's, you know, we're going to start collecting. Where do you want to use it? So I don't think we should count any of it for this year. I think in the future, you know, it could just be used as revenue and tax reduction. I mean, there's any number of things you can use it for, so. But I can tell you, if I look quickly, to answer the question you actually asked. It would represent, let me just see here, if I put it in cents or percentages, I think I put it in percentages. So it would be about 15% tax reduction, so, if we just took it and reduced the taxes by.
Jack?
I'm going to start out. I, you know, every year, Mayor, you send the survey to all the council members, and you, one of the questions you always ask is, well, what's your target for, for a budget? What's our percentage, or whatever? And I, my answer is always the same. I don't really know what my target is, because what my really, real target is, is how are we, what are the services we need to provide to the residents, and how can we afford to provide them and make it work? And where I come, come out here is that we don't have any services that we're providing to the city that we don't need to be providing. And so I, I think we need, what we hear from people is that, you know, one thing we hear a lot from people is they're, they've got real issues with some of the public infrastructure, the roads, the water system in particular. And, and so we need to keep maintaining our investments in those services, and I think the same is true for everything we do. I think that although it's a hard year because inflation is high, we can't say, well, we're just going to disregard the fact of inflation, and we're not going to, because that's really going to result in cuts in the services that people rely on. So I, just as a big-picture view of the proposal, I, it looks good to me. I think we're hitting the target where we should be.
I don't want to respond to that specifically. Something I just forgot to mention in my presentation, which I meant to mention, is that it does have to do with inflation. As you know, this past year, we've struggled mightily with vacancies in our positions, and inability to fill key positions, and also, as you know, we've come to you with necessary adjustments in personnel costs to attract employees. And that's fully reflected in this budget. So that is one of the things that puts pressure on the other aspects, like capital, those are, you know, not to sort of trade one versus the other, but this is now fully in this budget. So the, the changes we had to make to the police contract, public works contract, to stabilize, you know, this is part of the cost, not only the, the inflationary cost in our budget, but then the- is part of the cost, not only the inflationary cost in our budget, but then the restraints on the other choices. And, you know, obviously, at the time, we didn't know exactly what those trade-offs would be, but we did know we were going to have to face trade-offs, and you all understood, you know, we all understood that. So just meant to say that in my presentation, but thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, just to kind of echo what Jack had said, I think, you know, I don't have a target either, because I think we need to look at, what do we actually need to do? What services do we need to provide? And then we have to figure out how to pay for that. At the same time, recognizing that we're all dealing with inflation, setting a target for an increase that is above inflation, it is uncomfortable for me to be defending to folks in Montpelier with inflation being as high as it is, and we're all paying, all of us are paying so much extra for everything. So I don't have any thoughts about how to change that yet. I will be looking more carefully at it, and I'm excited about the spreadsheet where I can play around with different things. But I don't want to cut services, and if there are other ways to find revenue other than property taxes, which I know we're going to be talking about a little bit later, that would be great. But, you know, I know we're sort of locked in here. But so that's just where I'm coming from.
Good.
Do you mind if we go over the Confluence Park numbers again there, just for what we'd be on the hook for this year? And I'm asking just because, you know, I think somebody had a comment, and I think I would agree to some extent, we, significant work could displace some of the unhoused who are currently sort of residing there, and I would worry about that, and whether that might be actually an impediment to move forward with some of these plans?
So I, I don't really have a professional opinion about that, but certainly as far as the numbers are concerned, you know, the original thought was this project was going to be an approximately half a million dollar project, and then we got estimates at about 1 to 1.2. So a grant was received, and I, Alec is here, so you can bail me out if I get this wrong, but the grant was received for about $500,000 or $600,000. We put in essentially the match. Last year, the bond, we included $600,000 for the city's match, thinking that was the combination of the two would be sufficient to do this project. I haven't seen all the details, so I can't speak that intelligently about it, but wasn't that long ago, we got word that those costs were going to be close to $2 million instead of, you know, 1.2. And I know, for me at least, that caused me a little bit of pause. This isn't a large piece of land, and it's a pretty sizable, you know, cost. And then more recently, we got costs, very recently, within the last week or so, that those numbers could be approaching $3 million. And so we had a conversation internally about, you know, what should we do, given that this has been a council priority. So our conclusion to recommend to you and to talk about tonight and next week is that we would, the design is almost done. We're doing internal technical review on it, that we would bring the design to the council so people could see it, could see the estimates, and then decide whether you wanted to go forward, whether you wanted to just hold the design and delay, try to find, you know, what you wanted to do with it. So that's where that particular project stands. Your choices with regard to the $600,000 is, you know, obviously, if you're going to, so number one, if we chose not to do the project, we could just not let the debt. So we had a $1.8 million bond, we'd only issue 1.2 million of it, and we'd never have to pay the debt on it, and we could go back and ask for the funds for something else. Or we could rework, you know, and I think what we're going to suggest is that we, we have to put a bond amendment language on for that particular article anyway because of the pellet stove. So why not also put something that gives us the flexibility to reallocate that money if we choose to, so we don't then have to have a subsequent vote? So then the council could, again, you could always choose not to let the money, or you could choose to then reallocate it to some other bond-worthy project. And I say bond-worthy because we will always recommend against bonding for paving. So while it's easy to say, oh, there's $600,000 for paving, that's not a good use of debt service. So, but there are many other projects for which it could be a good use. So that's kind of where we stand right now. But, you know, until you say anything, it's still an active project that we are pursuing and that we will bring to you for your consideration when it's ready for primetime.
It does seem to like we need to make some kind of decision about that soon, but it also seems like, do we need to make a decision about that together with this budget?
I think, so my own opinion is that the only decision you need to make is if you want to sort of just rework that ballot item and to make it more flexible. Then you, then assuming we do that, assuming it passes, then you can decide the fate of the project whenever you're ready to hear about it and what you want to do about it. And, you know, maybe that includes asking them, how do you get it back down to the number that we want it? You know, I mean, I think there's, you know, I don't think you have to do anything. I know Mike looks like maybe he's wanting to speak more to that. So I will happily stop talking.
Hi, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So I just wanted to clarify that. What we have right now is a grant to develop the plans. So there is a grant, there's already money for developing the plans. That's the project we're completing, that what the designers need going forward is a review from the staff, that's the technical review, and then a presentation to council, so they can finish their grant, which is the project design. Obviously, we always designed this project with the intention of moving it forward. So there's going to kind of be one step, which is, what do you think of the design? What are your comments? And then there may be immediately thereafter, a process, that is, but we're probably not going to move it forward, or we're going to hold it. There's been some interest. You'll get a presentation from the River Conservancy. They would like a year, hold the bond open for a year so we could go and do the fundraising. They will make that presentation to you in January when we meet. So just so you understand, there are two separate pieces. One is to complete the design. That's what these folks are getting paid to do. That's what they're working on. They put together the budget estimates to go along with it that have been escalating. So you'll certainly have opportunities to ask them about why the costs are where they are, and what we might be able to remove to reduce prices, those types of questions. But there is one piece of design and one piece of what do we do afterwards?
Yes, Jeff. And then Donna?
And this money we got, this grant we got for the design is money that we own now, and we would not have to give it back if we get the design and then don't go forward to construct the project.
No, we don't have to repay it?
We would have to, we would have to take the money out of the bonds if we didn't construct the grants that we got assumed construction. So, yeah, if we call it at the end now, we'd be on the hook for about $150,000.
Good to know. Thank you.
All right. And so for the public who couldn't hear Alec, he said that the city could be on the hook for $150,000 if we didn't move forward.
Okay, Donna?
I have a question too, Mike. When you mentioned the wording, you indicated develop the land. Is it specifically at Confluence Park? Was the bond and such that it could be any park?
Bill knows the bonding language better than I do.
I'd have to look at it. I think it, I'd have to look at it. If someone has an annual report, we can answer that question really quickly. But, yeah, I just, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Donna?
Well, I too, and I'm glad to see others who aren't looking for a certain percentage. In the past, I was a little bit of minority there. But I also feel like that whatever the inflation rate is at the moment changes. And it had been 7.7, and now it's 7.1. And who knows what it is by the time of town meeting. But generally, we know that where we are now is in the general field. We're not way out. So I feel very comfortable with that, and maybe even a little higher if we find some essential need that we want to increase, like capital. So I'm generally okay.
So on that, I'm going to dig a little deeper because on the questions of like, what are the services that maybe we've left out? I have some questions. So in the message that's attached to the agenda, there's some, there's a list of items that are not included. And some of those, I'm fine with, some of those I have questions about. So this does not include the Parks Commission request. That's something that's on my radar, of something that I would like us to consider, putting that in. Anyway, I'm looking forward to getting the spreadsheet so I can play with, you know, like, how much does that actually affect it? Same with the $8,000 request, increase for the Wrightsville Reservoir District. And then, so that would, I assume, also be on this list of things that are currently not included. Yes? Is that correct, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Nope, it's okay. We may want to also consider the Conservation Commission request. I don't know what the Parks Urban Ranger position is. Wondering if anyone has some information about that?
I think I know how to work one of these. Alec Ellsworth, Parks Director. The Urban Ranger position was created sort of in tandem with Confluence Park, recognizing that we have maintenance needs specifically around the recreation path. And with Confluence Park coming on board, as we thought, in the next year, it was a seasonal position to sort of take on a bunch of under-maintained items such as the rec path. Montpelier Alive was going to throw in some money for watering flowers and things like that. And because Confluence Park, it seemed, whatever happened, whatever you all decide with it, it's clearly not going to get constructed in the next budget year. So we just took the Urban Ranger position off, in the sense that it felt like an easy scratch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Could, sorry, did you have questions?
Maybe it was going to say the same thing you were going to say, which is, might be useful to just go through the whole list of things that aren't included to...
Yeah. So I would like to know about the Washington County Mental Health Social Worker. I'd like to know a little bit more about the trash contract that's listed here, and then the police subscription to the LexisNexis and radio backup.
So why don't, I'll try to get people up here that, grouping. I'd also point out that, you know, when you hear, just when you hear the budget presentations from each department, there may be additional items that weren't included too. So this is, these are big, but just to be clear, so that there are more than that. But maybe Chief Pete could explain the Washington County Mental Health and the police subscription? No, just Chief Pete.
For Washington County, we, sorry about that. Eric Nordson from the Police Department. For the Washington County part, we have not been able to fill the position for the last year plus. We're having some revisitation of what we actually want and need. So we're talking about possibly having a screener and looking for funding through Washington County Mental Health for that. So that was kind of a cut that hurt, but it also didn't cost us a plow driver or a police officer. So it was one that we took. And then the new initiatives that we had were LexisNexis to basically have a dashboard for people to do online reporting to us. And it was just something that, again, we didn't feel good about taking new initiatives when, you know, we're making tough decisions on pavement and things like that. And then the radios were like a secondary radio for us, where we can communicate on our radio through our cell phones. So if we were in a unique area where our radios maybe didn't work, our cell phones could then double as our radios. And it was a, it was a small amount, but again, when everybody's sacrificing a little bit, you don't take anything new. So those are our three things that we looked at that we just didn't think we should put in there.
I guess I would be curious as to, so those are two separate things, the LexisNexis and then the radio backup?
Correct.
Right. So I would be curious as to what the radio backup would cost.
That was, I believe it was $5,000. Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Kurt, I believe, well Kurt, do you want to talk about the trash contract?
Sorry, thank you, team, for letting me ask all these questions. Yeah, the spreadsheet, the interactive spreadsheet is coming, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This is, I think you're just going off the letter, right?
Yeah, I'm going off the letter right now. Yeah. Sorry, thank you.
Kurt Modica, Public Works Director. So we've gotten a lot of complaints about the trash pickup and the trash barrels overflowing in the downtown. So we had proposed initially in the budget to increase the frequency of the pickup. Right now, it's two days a week. We had looked at going to three days a week. You know, again, like Eric Nordson said, from PDE, you know, we look to cuts. So we took that out, but we do have a backup plan in proposing an amendment to our union contract and having GPW staff make that extra pickup with some financial incentive in the union contract. It's a little bit of an unknown, but that was the approach we're going to take to resolve that issue.
Thank you. I have one other question about one of the things that was in your presentation, which is, so in the upgrades to this room, I mean, you mentioned microphones, so that basically like the electrical system. I am, one of the things that's just been on my radar for this room that should happen is that this horseshoe should not be elevated for ADA purposes. So is that, that's not, I assume that's not a part of the upgrades, but it would be great if it would be.
It was strictly technological, but it is something we could, well, that would be a separate thing.
That would be a separate thing.
We could put a ramp somewhere.
Put a ramp, that's true.
Being able to be seen from when you're in the audience doesn't work unless you're a little elevated.
Yeah, that's fair.
Kelly, do you want to try to describe the proposal we've got, or? Okay.
Not that urgent right now. Mostly, I was just wondering if, you know, since we were talking about this room, you know, was included there. Okay. Any other questions that folks have? Thoughts, comments? Okay. Do you, do you feel like you have enough information to...
I mean, I guess the question is, it sounds like people aren't looking to make, you know, if you want us to move to try to get to 7.1 before next week, or you just want to leave it where it is and see where you end up, or, I, we're, you know?
What I'm hearing is that, it sounds like we should leave it where it is for now, and we'll have more discussion in the future, the next meeting. Yes, Carrie?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think if we, I might be interested in suggestions for getting it down a little bit, but I think that you all have done your part and come to us with, you know, I know you've done a lot of work at getting it to where you want it to be. And so I think now it's a little bit more in our court to look at it and make some suggestions or decisions.
We appreciate that, but of course, where we want it to be is where you want it to be. So we're happy to, you know, we're happy to work on that. And I think, what do we think, the difference between the 0.3% was like $30,000 or something. So that's if you were, that's what you'd be looking for to, so it just becomes a priority question. And obviously, if you wanted to put more into capital, then the rest has to come up. You know, assuming it's not going any higher than where it is now. I mean, I think that if there's, well, I don't know, maybe you'll add more. I don't want to make that assumption. You all have done stranger things in the past.
Yeah, I mean, yes, Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, overall, I echo what others have said. I think the approach of, you know, let's fund what we need to fund for the essential services. I think a time of hardship with high inflation is not a time to be cutting services to the community. And I pretty much every day hear something about people wanting, you know, improvement to the roads or things. It's not looking for cutting services. I pretty much never hear. So I think we're on the right track. I mean, one thing that I brought up in the capital improvement conversation earlier, but just to name, I mean, I think as we look at it, I mean, I just have my eye on that massive pile of federal funds, and I know we're still waiting on guidance and what that could be. But in terms of like the city needs and upcoming projects and the things that seem to be eligible, you know, because there's a lot of money for roads, bridges, EV charging, like, there are buckets that we know. And so, you know, being able to look at how do we take And so, you know, being able to look at how do we take full advantage and keep, you know, our eye on the priorities and the direction that we want to go to be meeting the needs of the community and, you know, funding the things that we need to in our city budget in the interim. But like, that's maybe where I would be looking for, if we're going to do any nibbling around the edges, is things that seem like likely potential federal funding opportunities. And if that doesn't happen in the next year, we learn more, you know, then that's okay. But that's how I would be approaching it.
Other thoughts?
Just one point of clarification from earlier. The ballot language was specific to Confluence Park, but it didn't have a dollar amount for Confluence Park, but it didn't. So it couldn't go to some other park.
Okay. I anticipate that we'll, oh, yes, go ahead, Lauren.
Just one other thought. I mean, some of these also, you know, for example, the, sorry, the social worker position, I think some of these we could also look at state funding and create new legislators, like things that I do think are services that the state should be providing, should be increasing services and funding for, and whether that's embedded in the community. But, you know, I think for our legislative agenda and the kind of thing we can advocate, I mean, that should be coming from the state, frankly. And, you know, I think keeping an eye on it if it's not happening for our community, but just putting a plug in.
As you should. I have a couple of questions about, like, so the social equity consultant, like, where's their, the CJAC is still working together with the social equity consultant, is that correct? Yeah?
So we have been in conversation with Creative Discourse for ongoing work. The current thing that we're hearing a lot of interest from city committees and stuff are DEI trainings and trainings that would take, I think, hiring consultants with that professional expertise to do. So I, I think likely the 10,000 that's earmarked for that would actually be going to city staff and city committee contracts, whether it's with Creative Discourse or a different consultant, because they have been a little maxed out lately. So we haven't, there's not a current active contract with them, I believe, although there might still be like a little bit going on.
Yeah.
But it would be most likely going towards that work, which we've been hearing, we've been getting a lot of requests for.
Okay. And then the other thing that's on my radar is, you know, we've got $45,000 for the homelessness task force, but we're already sort of flagging some money for, you know, it was 10 times that, you know, for, for them, you know, based on this report. So it feels a little funny to have both of those things, but I, you know, that's a...
So the homelessness task force money is almost entirely allocated to the outreach worker?
Oh, okay.
And actually, not to, not to go the other way, but, you know, if they're going to continue running the Transit Center program and shelters, you know, I think we're contributing 18,000, which isn't in the budget, we're just sort of taking it from the general budget. So at some point, we could even, you know, if we're trading stuff around, we didn't, we might even put more into that. So, so that's operating, I think the 425,000 is if we're going to build or establish a sort of a more permanent facility type thing, or it wouldn't be for program things, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments folks would like to make about the budget at this point? Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all the answers from the staff, that is very helpful. And I think we are ready to move, you don't need a, any kind of vote at this point. So anything?
It's your budget now.
Yeah. Anything further about, oh, Peter Kelman, I see your hand, go ahead.
Bill, could you put your, that very good report you did in the agenda packet?
The PowerPoint?
The slides you just did.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we will. And it'll all be in the budget book too, I think. We, I'm not sure, the PowerPoint that we just did tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
We just finished it this afternoon, so yeah, we will add that to the stuff.
Okay, but this happened last year at budget time, too. You did a fantastic report, but it wasn't in, it wasn't in the agenda packet. I get, I get that you just finished it. But this, the general public needs to see that, that kind of everyday language approach. Going through the budget book is beyond what most people are going to be interested or able to do. And I think that if we want to engage the public in the budget, that kind of slideshow you just did is the way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on then. Okay, so the local option sales tax, anything? I know we sort of talked about that a little bit already, but anything further?
You know, I think the reason for bringing this up, obviously, is we've, we've just been facing budget needs. I think the comments we heard earlier today are, you know, one of the questions is always, what impact might it have? I think the question tonight was, do you, is that something, is this a conversation you even want to have? Or should we forget about it? If it is, then we can, you know, draft the language. And I think obviously we'd want to engage the community and the business folks, take a look at other communities that have had this. I think generally the experience has been that they have not seen a real change in, in business, sales, those kinds of things. But I think we should get, you know, if that's going to be a concern, we should get real data to look at that. And I would imagine people would, would want to hear more about it. So, but, you know, so all I'm saying is if, if we want to do it, it's going to lead to a March vote. We ought to be thinking about how we engage the business community and the community. But if you don't want to do it, then we don't have to talk about it again.
I will just start off by saying I'm interested in doing this. I was in favor of the local option sales tax when it came up so many years ago, together with the meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. I'm still in favor of it now, and mostly it is because we are a destination town and don't pay for them, and this is a way to capture some of that financial support. And one of the things that I think we could highlight for folks is, so in your memo about this, the amount to spend in Montpelier to break even value is $54,000 a year, or on a weekly average is $1,000. You'd have to spend $1,000 a week roughly to, for a resident to, for it to not be worth it for a Montpelier resident. And that, that I think is, actually, would you mind explaining that?
So without the benefit of a sheet to put up here, I'll try to do this as easily as I could. So basically, without doing the math, you know, to be confirmed, but it looks as though the, based on the 2021 sales, taxable sales in Montpelier, we would net about 1.675 million. That could be off a little bit. I think probably, you know, there could be some Berlin sales, because I think they track it by zip code. So we probably need some, you know, some refining of that. But this is, just looking at what the state reports for Montpelier sales, that's what it would be. So that's about 10% of our general fund budget, or about 15% of our property taxes. So if you take the assumption that this is money we would have spent property taxes on, either, we either reduce the tax rate by it, or we buy things for the public that we couldn't have afforded otherwise. But either way, the public is getting the value of this as opposed to being taxed. If you look at how much, so that's about a 15%, so if you take the average resident property value of 275,000, they would save $543 a year in property taxes. That'd be $543. They don't have to spend out of property taxes to get that value of taxes paid. So if you divide that by, you know, the 1% of what they, you know, that's 1% of what they'd have to spend. So that's 1% of $54,000 a year. So if they're paying 1% on these purchases, they'd have to spend $54,000 before they spent more than $543,000, $543 in, in sales tax. So then you just divide that by 52 weeks, and it's about $1,000 a week. So the average homeowner would have to spend about $1,000 a week on taxable sales in Montpelier all year to sort of be spending more on the sales tax than what they would be, the benefit they'd be receiving in their property tax.
Yeah. Thank you. I get that. I had to, I had to close my eyes and visualize and follow along very carefully, but I get it. So, okay, so the, the problem with that, or the flaw in there, is that a lot of people besides homeowners are, will be paying the sales tax, and they won't be seeing that return on their property taxes. And so I, I just will kind of state for the record that I'm not a fan of sales taxes. I really actually hate the sales tax. In fact, I'm pretty much across the board opposed to sales tax. It's the most regressive tax there is. And, and it really hits people who are at the lower end of the income scale really hard. It makes a big difference if you have to pay that extra 1%. You know, it's, it's something, it could be noticeable for someone where, for somebody else, it's not really going to be noticeable, and then their taxes might go down, if we choose to do that, which is a big if. So I would, it would be my preference to find some other source of revenue than a sales tax. The rooms and meals tax, I'm all for, because that really does very directly get, get some revenue from people who don't necessarily live here, but are still using our services. Whereas the sales tax, it will be some people, it'll be some visitors will be paying it, but mostly it'll be Montpelier residents who are paying it. So that's, that's where I am on that one. Other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
First of all, a question, is, are there, what, what does it apply to? Is it everything? Are there exemptions for food, for example, like non-prepared foods, clothing?
So I'm, I'm not a sales tax expert, although I think if we want to proceed with this, we'll get easy answers. I do believe there are some exemptions on clothing, there are exemptions on food, like grocery, there, when you go to the grocery store, you buy food, then there's, you get, it tells you which things are taxable and which things aren't. But I think things like paper towels might be taxable, but food aren't, those kinds of things. So I mean, certainly, yeah, so there are exemptions, and this, this would follow the state. Anything that is sales tax for the state would, because basically that's how it's collected. The state collects the sales tax, remits it back to the city after keeping their share out of it. Well, you know, this is a, this is a little bit of inside baseball, but we, we do make a little bit of extra money on this because the 30% of the state keeps, they keep 5% for administration costs, but then 25% of it goes into the statewide payment law taxes fund to fund towns and cities across the state that have state-owned properties. So one of the reasons our own pilot money, revenues have been going up steadily over the years, is that more and more towns are enacting these local options taxes. So as the pot gets bigger, we're getting more money. So if we put this money, put our share into the pot, we get about 11% of that back, because we're the bigger, I mean, probably the biggest recipients of pilot funds. So we would, in addition to the sales tax, we'd pick up like another $75,000 in our pilot. But that is not, that in and of itself is not the reason to do it or not to do it, but it's just a, we benefit. Other communities doing this have brought us up to a very high level of pilot. That's just a fact. And, and I think all the issues that Councilmember Brown raises are fair issues, and that's what we've heard before, and I think they're policy issues we've got to wrestle with. Like I said, if you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it. But certainly looking at the budgets we've had the last couple of years, the infrastructure we need, we had, that felt like we need to bring this to you, because there's, there really isn't any other source of revenue we're really going to be able to do in, under the state's construct. This is the last one left that we haven't done, so.
Jack, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm sure if I spent enough time, I could go back over my posts in Green Mountain Daily from many years ago, in which I argued in support of both the rooms and meals and local option sales tax. I agree with everything Carrie says about the sales tax as a regressive source of funds. The factors that militate on the other side, in my view, are the fact that, as the mayor pointed out, one of the big drivers of our municipal expenses is people who come in from out of, out of the city to work, and while they're working here, they're also spending money. So to the extent we can extract tax revenues from them, it's going to, it's putting into effect the policy of cost-causers-pay. And we're in less of a good position now, because we don't have as many state employees coming into the city, so that, as Phil Dodd mentioned earlier, that weakens that a bit. But thinking long-term, I think that we will continue to see an increase in people from outside the city working in, in the city. I don't think it's ever going to be the same level as it was before the pandemic. Another thing that the manager mentioned at our meeting, a meeting or two ago, was that part of the reason that the estimated revenues are higher than, higher now than they have been in past years, is because of the, this would also apply to cannabis sales, and we have retail cannabis vendors in, in the city. And, and so that's a source of revenue that is worth looking at it. So I think, given the fact that we don't have other significant sources on the horizon to increase our funds, I think we should, we should be exploring it, and that doesn't mean we'll necessarily adopt it.
So I guess one essential question right now is, is anybody opposed to us having it on the agenda again next time for further discussion? Okay. It, it seems like it's, the consensus is it's at least worth talking about, and so...
It really only becomes timely because there's a deadline by which you have to file charter language with the city clerk before. And so I think, and I gave you that outline, but I don't have it in front of me. So we just, if we're going to do that, as well as the charter language on the utility, we just have to make sure we hit those, those deadlines. They're not quite the same as the public hearings for the budgets, so.
Okay. All right, so to be continued on that one. Do you, Donna, go ahead.
Just one question about it. Since we already have the meals and rooms, how is it, how difficult is it for the shops to implement it, for the store owner? Is it the same level that our meals and...
I don't, you know, I'm not a shop owner, so I don't know. I think the state helps them with that. I think that's part of what you pay the fee for. You know, they're already collecting the sales tax, presumably it's adjusting their computer, and it, it's an extra percent. We're not asking them to collect a new tax that they're not already collecting. So I think there's just a bit of the state...
Because they're sending it to the state.
Right, they collect it and send it in. It's the same activity, yes.
Thank you.
But I don't want to presume for them that it's easy. Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on, if that's okay. Thank you. So to be continued on that. So I think we're ready to move on to the utility status update, and I welcome our DPW director, Kurt Monica. Oh, my presentation, I'm going to go.
Yep, yeah, I have a quick PowerPoint presentation. Kurt Monica, Public Works Director. I'll try to keep this quick, because I know I'm being followed by the cops here, so.
Nobody likes to be followed by the cops.
Can I just sneak in here if you get it?
Oops, I think so.
Okay. Right there. Okay.
Sorry. Okay, so there's a, it's been a lot of discussion recently on particularly the water system. I've had quite a few interviews with the press, and then as we heard tonight, there's been some interesting questions from the public on the status. So I thought it was a good time, given all the recent interest, to provide an update on where we're at on both the water system and the sewer system. So quickly cover some of the history of the water and sewer, and where we started and where we're at today. Where we're on, where we're at on replacement schedule for footage of pipes in relation to the Water and Sewer Master Plan, which was adopted in 2016. Speak about the water system hydraulic analysis, which is related to the pressures within the water system. An update on the sewer, where we're at, what's upcoming on regulations from state oversight. And then open up for questions and discussion. So the water system history, the, the Berlin Pond was initially started, or used for the source for Montclair's water system in the late 1800s. So actually, when I was on, I did a project on Ridge Street for the city when I first started. And actually, we took out a piece of pipe that was stamped 1899, and that was only, you know, 12, 13 years ago. So we have a lot of really old pipes. When the pond was first used for the water source, that's when the sys, the city's pressure was probably about 170 in the downtown, 170 PSI. And over the years, they, that was when the inlet was actually where the, where the plant is now, the treatment plant. And over the years, they extended the pipeline up to the pond and gained, you know, another 60 feet of elevation, which translates to about 30 PSI. So since the late 1800s, we've been at, you know, 170 PSI compared to the 200, and then over, you know, the next, basically in the 1950s, I believe, is when that was finally extended all the way into the, the center of Berlin Pond where we have our pressures today. All during that time, cast iron pipe was used. That was really the only pressure pipe available back in those days. In the 80s, the city, based on those pressures, constructed the booster stations and expanded the service area. So the, those two tanks were, one is on Terrace Street and one is on Town Hill. They both have pump stations associated with them, which boost, you know, the pressure that's coming from the pond, and then boosted up to storage tanks to be able to serve a broader range of customers. In the 90s, there was a lot of water projects. Primarily large diameter water mains were installed. This was really for fire protection and to bring the water to these tanks. During that time period, ductile iron was the primary piping for the city. In 2000, it's actually when I was still in college, I interned on the construction of the water plant. Until that time, you know, the city was basically being served chlorinated pond water. There's no treatment at all, just a, just a chemical drip. So I was pretty astonished, coming out of all my college classes, seeing the capital of Vermont is drinking pond water. And it really wasn't that long ago, if you put, you know, think about that. In 2016, we adopted the master plan, was a, you know, identified as a council priority that we have, you know, aging infrastructure and the pipes needed to, you know, accelerated attention. So that master plan, like Bill mentioned earlier, is, is inflation plus 1%, and that 1% is intended to go for infrastructure. So that is our, you know, average proposed rate increase for the water and sewer utilities. About that same time, 2016, we adopted HDPE as our piping standard. I feel that has a lot of advantages for a high-pressure system and being able to basically stretch and expand and absorb some pressure fluctuations. It also has a high-pressure rating, 250 PSI, so there's a safety buffer above and beyond what the city's pressure is at. And then the, the most recent, bigger project that we've done is to bring Murray Hill online, which added, you know, fairly substantial user base, and, you know, helps with revenue. On the sewer side, the city's system was initially built with essentially one pipe for all stormwater and all sewer, and it all went to the rivers. You can still see around town, there's what they call the sanitary dams, which basically just kept the water level up in the river to keep the solids from the waste underwater, to keep the odors down. And those are still, you can still see them in, in the North Branch. In 1962, there was a major, major project in the city that took the sewer and, and took basically the, intercepted all the sewers from all the buildings and put it to a separate pipeline and constructed the very first version of the wastewater plant. And that was only, you know, 1962. Until that point, all of the sewage went straight to the rivers. In the 60s, pump stations were constructed. Most of them were in the early 60s. Those are still our pump stations today, getting very, you know, aged. And then the, the most recent one is around 1980, the newest one. In the 90s, the separation of stormwater was the big push. You know, state mandated to reduce the number of overflow vents. So just to recap, CSOs are, we still have a lot of stormwater connected to the, to the sewer system. And during really high rain events, the, the piping cannot carry all the storm and sewer together. And it, and there's these, there's six now structures around the city that overflow to the river. Again, in 2016, we adopted the master plan to accelerate both infrastructure, you know, the aging infrastructure replacement, as well as sewer, CSO separation projects. And then in 2019, we did two major planning documents identifying which roof drains are still connected to the sewer, contributing to overflows, as well as our long-term control plan, which is really our guiding document to eliminate sewer overflows. And then most recently was the large improvement project at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. So on the master plan, you know, probably can't see these numbers, but, you know, we've done, we've done a lot of, a lot of pipe projects since 2016. You know, I think it's a testament that the, that the master plan is effective, it's working. Just the hot, the highlighted line there is, you know, we've replaced just under 10,000 linear feet of sewer main since 2016, and almost 17,000 feet of water main. So it is a little bit behind our targets in the master plan. But a lot of that is related to the pandemic. We did essentially lose a year of construction. The state actually shut down construction projects. We got an exemption for the wastewater plant upgrade, but at the time, we were doing Clarendon Avenue, and, and we lost basically a whole summer. One of the other approaches that we're taking in achieving a steady state is what we call asset divestment. So a lot of streets have two sewer mains or two water mains, and if you can reduce that to a single line, that's that much footage you don't have to replace, and it's that much footage that's no longer within your asset management program. So those aren't captured in the table on the left as far as, you know, comparison to the master plan, but they do really contribute to, you know, achieving steady state. There. So the, this is really getting to the pressures in the water system. We have contracted with a consulting engineer to do a, a full evaluation of the water system. And that includes what it would take to reduce the pressure in the downtown. They've given us just some, we don't have the report yet, it's currently underway, but they have given us some preliminary feedback. They're going to look at three alternatives. Alternative one is not to do anything, just going to keep it the way it is. It's obviously not a good option. Alternative two, reduce the pressure to 115 PSI in the downtown. So that's, you know, not quite half, but a significant reduction. They're indicating we probably would need four new booster pump stations. There may be some high-level service customers that wouldn't, we would have to probably drill wells for because we wouldn't have enough pressure to serve them anymore. And then a relocation of the pressure-reducing well on Town Hill. So we don't have cost, what that would take financially, or, you know, what, where these pump stations would go. So we don't know if there's actually, you know, the land available. But that is the option. We are taking it, you know, seriously and looking at it, you know, with an open mind. And we'll see where that report comes in. But there, you know, just to point out that there are some high-level impacts, and some infrastructure needed to accomplish a pressure reduction. And then the alternative three is sort of what the city's been doing is, is replacing the distribution piping with, you know, high-pressure pipe. That's really consistent with the master plan that's currently in place. The other, another item that they, that we're looking at as part of this report is reducing pressure spikes. So that can have an impact on the number of leaks. And we've had just one preliminary meeting with CVMC. They're interested in getting out of the water business. They have an existing water tank that is aging, that needs to be replaced. And there's a potential that the city could take over that tank and use that to feed the, the downtown. And that would eliminate the city having to pump directly from the water plant into the system. And those pumps have to rotate. And every time those pumps rotate, you get a pressure spike that can, you know, result in leaks at the city, in the downtown. I think that's, we've done a long, would come a long ways in smoothing out that transition between the pump rotations. But I think it, you know, it would still be improved by having a, a gravity feed system rather than a pump system. One other consideration is, is the impact of fire capacity. As we do, if we were to reduce the pressure, your available fire flow then also becomes reduced, and that's something else we'll be looking at in the report. And then, under our permit condition, the other last thing is related to fire, fire flow capacity is we, we will be required to identify all of the water mains that are undersized to meet the necessary fire flow, which is 500 gallons a minute, without dropping pressure below 20 PSI. So basically, it's going to point out all the, all of the lines that are not in compliance with the rules. So this report will serve as what we call preliminary engineering report. So it sets us up for being eligible for funding. So when that federal money does come down the line, we're through the first step. I anticipate that federal money will be channeled through the state. So the state has reviewed this contract, they've approved it, and they'll be reviewing the results. So, you know, it's, there's another benefit to doing this work in, in that we are curing ourselves up for funding for both, you know, the hospital option or line replacements. Update on the sewer system. We have a couple big, really big CSO projects upcoming this summer. The, the State Street sewer main is, you know, I think one of our biggest restrictions in the sewer system. That line, that main pipe goes underneath an old steam line and comes back up. And we have not been able to clean it, we, in, you know, at least 10 years. So there's probably a whole lot of sediment accumulated in that piping, and now, you know, the 30, 32-inch pipe is probably, you know, down to 10 inches. So when you get all that capacity back, we're going to really drop our, our frequency of CSO overflows. In addition, in addition, we'll be also separating out a large parking lot out of the sewer system. And then East State Street is just, the sewer system is terrible. We tried to camera it, and it has all these bends and, and pipe size fluctuations, and we could not get the camera up through the piping. So that's in bad shape. It did fail a few years ago, and we had emergency repair on the sewer system. And there's a, you know, a massive drainage area. All of East State Street goes to the sewer. And then the, that stormwater from East State passes through four of our six CSO structures. So there's four opportunities to reduce overflow frequencies. And then we have a big project at the wastewater plant, Phase Two, that was bonded for last year. It handles, you know, deals with PPHOS and the solids, odor control, which is a permanent requirement, and the last piece of old infrastructure at the plant, which is the secondary clarifiers. A little bit unregulatory compliance. So the hydraulic analysis I talked about is, was a permit requirement from the state under our permit to operate. They will mandate a replacement schedule once the hydraulic analysis is done, and it likely have been told will be faster than what our master plan is set up to fund. So I'm not sure how we'll, we'll address that, but hopefully there will be a lot of federal money available to us, and, and that will be important. The other option to replace in the lines is to reduce the amount of fire protection the city has. So that could potentially mean abandoning the hydrants on the smaller diameter mains. But there's other concerns of that, water quality, we use them for flushing. So, you know, this, this study will, and what comes out of it after the state review could have some significant impacts on, on fire flow capacity at this, on the water system, or funding levels needed to maintain that fire flow capacity. And then, you know, how pressure reduction potentially factors into that is still unknown until we get that report. On the sewer side, it's all regulated under our wastewater discharge permit. Through our long-term control plan, we are required to do updates every five years. We have the odor control mandate through a notice of alleged violation. And we also have ammonia limits coming up in our next permit. So we are working with our consultant to see if we can address the, the required treatment for ammonia in this next project. Sort of combine it in one, and get economy of scale, and we'll be all ready for that next permit. And right now, that, you know, that looks like we should be achievable for a relatively low cost. And that is it, open up to questions.
Okay. I know I could talk about this stuff for a long time, so I'm going to not do that. So I, just one question, which is, so in regards to the high pressure, you know, the, all the, the questions that folks have for us about, you know, how are you addressing the high pressure? The answer really is that you've got to study out, we're going to see what they recommend, what, what some consultants recommend.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I was really pleased that you've given us such a detail. In the past, whenever Tom was asked, when he was here, was, is this going to cost millions to change it? But you can see how complex it is, and it isn't a new problem. One of my questions is, some of those pipes are so old, no matter what kind of pressure we had, they were going to need, need to be replaced. Is that true?
Yes, that's true. And, you know, what we discovered was the ductile iron installed in the 90s is actually failing in a lot of cases faster than the cast iron installed in there, you know, 1800s. So, and that's because of the acidic soils that we have. Clay soils are acidic, they're also conductive. And, you know, a lot of homes in Montclair, they ground their electrical service to their water service. And then that puts a small current through the water system, and it just accelerates corrosion. So we've just found that, that all those conditions in Montclair have led to really quick failure of the ductile iron pipe. So we're getting like 20 to 40 years out of the ductile where the cast is, you know, 120, and, and in a lot of cases, better condition.
Well, maybe that's another message we should send out, not to do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I don't think it's legal anymore, but these, you know, if it was, these houses are 100 years old, they're kind of grandfathered.
Got you. Other questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to thank you for putting this together. I know that this is a lot of work to pull this presentation together, and I really appreciate you taking the time to do it. And I think it's, between this and, and how much information there's been in the news lately, I think that a lot of really good detailed information is getting out about the work that you're doing, about the plans that you have, and about the, the challenges that we're facing and how you are approaching them. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Jack?
Thanks Kurt, I, I think this is a great presentation. I think that people watching should recognize that the city is not just ignoring the problem, you know... You know, it's, it, it takes hard work to fix, fix hard problems and that's what we have here. To be clear on, um, what the presentation is, am I right in thinking that right now the pressure coming down from Berlin Pond is so high that even to get to the higher elevations anywhere else in the city, it's enough to get down into the city and push the water up to those higher elevations without any pumping on our part?
Well, in some areas, right? So we have the two pump stations, so those do require pumping to maintain the minimum required pressures. Um, but yeah, a lot of locations rely on the high pressure coming from the, from the plant to get up to those hills where they're not served by the, a tank.
And, uh, you, you showed the diagram of when different, uh, things were, changes were implemented in the system. I remember the folklore used to be that there were a couple of times a year in the city where, uh, the water would taste kind of muddy and people would say that was when Berlin Pond was turning over because of the change in, in temperature. Was that inaccurate description of what was happening?
Uh, yes, that's true and it still happens today, um, you know, but it can, uh, you do get more sort of turbidity when the pond stratifies. Um, so, but when now we can address that with, you know, uh, the powder, the carbon addition helps take out those taste and odor concerns.
Yeah, I don't, I don't taste the change anymore the way I used to. And a resident came tonight and said, well, what, what people should do as an individual measure is put a couple, put two pressure reducing valves and then also put a pressure, uh, pressure release valve in their system. It, is that actually a feasible, uh, and effective thing for people to do?
Um, well, I'm not sure about a, a pressure relief valve and I've never seen that in a residential application. Um, you know, I think a lot of it is, is, uh, to know the age of the equipment in your home. So I, you know, I think if, if it, your house is a hundred years old and you still have the same PRV, you know, absolutely, that's time to change it, even 50 years. And I do, I have seen, um, dual installations of, of pressure relief valves. I don't think that's a, a bad idea necessarily. If you have a good, um, high-quality pressure reducing valve in place, you don't necessarily need to. But if people have concerns, um, you know, there's nothing wrong with doing that either.
Is, is there a way for a homeowner to, uh, find out what their, uh, water pressure is coming into their house?
Um, well, there's, you can put, uh, if there's a, like a hose connection, um, before their pressure reducing valve, they could put a gauge on. We can help if they call Public Works Office. And from this hydraulic analysis, we're actually going to get more detailed information about where the pressures are, um, within the city. But, um, we can give, uh, guidance on approximate values from Public Works Office.
Thanks. Donna's nodding her head, so she.
Yeah, well, my condo just went through a dreadful water leak that led to all of our reducers being damaged with sediment. And we found out that if you have your plumber come and attach, you have a hose, you have a spigot on the bottom of your water heater. And if your plumber attaches a pressure gauge there, they can tell you. And they came through and tested all, all of ours after this incident and most of us needed new pressure reducers. Uh, but they didn't advise more than one. And so I think you have to talk to your plumber, there's always a difference of opinion. And sure enough, the one person who had two, they both were damaged, they didn't help one another. And there is a release valve on the water heater that they may have been talking about. And it comes out the spigot and down.
Yep.
Lauren, and then I want to go to Linda Berger.
Thanks Kurt, this was super helpful and totally agree that this level of detail, like, is really informative. Seems like a lot of stormwater projects, so I'm excited, we're pursuing the stormwater utility. It seems like that will be a helpful way to stay on top of, uh, these big projects. My one question, which might be totally infeasible, but I remember at one energy advisory committee meeting, they had talked about how there's some like cool technology that they install in the pipe. That's like, I think it's a pressure reducer, but it creates energy. So it's like this new renewable energy thing, just throwing it out there, if we're doing an analysis and there might be like different pots of funding that that could open up that, you know, or if we're doing this really expensive upgrade anyway, that what would be infeasible to, uh, normally install if it was part of a, of project or something, maybe it becomes feasible. So just throwing it out there. Don't know much about it, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, so I think Berry City has high and low pressure lines and they did install a system like that. Um, you know, pressure reducing vaults are good, potentially good opportunities, um, to make power through turbines. Um, I don't know that Berlin, that Berry's was very successful, they've had issues with it, but doesn't mean, um, that it's not worth looking at. So depending on, you know, where we land on available pressure reduction, we certainly can look into that.
Okay, uh, Linda Berger, go ahead.
Hi Kurt, um, I have a question about the wastewater discharge permit, has the new one been issued?
No, it has not.
And could you explain a little bit about what the process is that you're looking for and the state's looking for?
Well, the, the state sort of, um, they reached out to us and gave us a heads up that, you know, because you're doing this upgrade at the plant, we wanted to use the opportunity, um, to consider, um, what your new limits will be on ammonia. The, the city's never had ammonia limits. And so, but we've been on, under a monitoring requirement, uh, from the state for the past few years. Um, so we have the data on what our levels are at. So it was really, I, I think within, I don't know the exact timeframe, but within the next year, we're anticipating being issued our new permit. And, um, and then we'll have a, a timeframe of, I think, three to five years to meet those, uh, new discharge limits on the ammonia.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, any other comments or questions from, yes?
Just quickly, first, thanks Kurt, great presentation, I hope people really saw that. Secondly, just perhaps a message to all that, you know, the water pressures are not new. This is something that's been around for a long time, the city, and we have been on top of trying to fund it and do the work. I think just as you hear about this and la, you know, I, I appreciate people's frustration, especially when they hear something in the news and they think it's a new situation. Um, but to, to do a quick fix would be millions of dollars. And so I don't know that people would want to put that kind of money on their water rates. So, um, you know, DPW's really been on top of this and trying to address it. And I think that the study will really help direct the work in the future. So, uh, Kurt and all the folks, well, Kurt in his capacity is, is our deputy with, has really been on this all along. But the prior directors have all paid close attention to this as well. So, uh, it's good that we got to tell the story a little bit tonight.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are ready to move on then to, uh, the police presentation. So welcome up chief. Hello.
Oh, well, it feels like it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city manager, assistant city manager, members of the public, Deputy Chief Nordensen, I'm Brian Peat with the Montpelier Police Department. And today I'd like to just give the council a very brief summarization of, um, the projects and the accomplishments and the things that, uh, that the department has yet to do, um, over the last two and a half years. Uh, the first slide just, uh, gives you the, the breakdown of some of the, um, of specifically what I'd like to, to inform the council and the public with today. And, and moving on to, um, the accomplished projects that we had in the year 2020. When upon coming aboard, Deputy Chief Nordensen and I conducted a climate assessment survey and we did that initial organizational assessment, uh, especially because of the, the, the many calls, uh, across the country regarding, uh, the policing profession. And, um, and, and that's something that we took extraordinarily serious because any organization or any, any profession that has that much, the power that we do needs to be looked at and needs to be scrutinized and, and criticized. So, so we, uh, went ahead, did the assessment, um, we worked with the police review committee. Um, we actually implemented a trial, uh, software survey for a system called Officer Survey in which, again, we were dealing with COVID at the time and we were trying to figure out ways to get, um, feedback from the community as to what they thought about the service that they were getting from the Montpelier Police Department. We implemented a, uh, threat assessment capability, again, and, and that led us to additions to the strategic plan. One of the biggest things in law enforcement is you, you can't throw a whole bunch of things at the wall and see what sticks. You have to, you can't paint everybody with the same brush. And we have to do intelligence-led policing strategies, not broken windows type theories because you have to know what the threats are that are out there and, and the potential dangers, uh, that are out there and, and, and the issues that our community face and what those priorities are. And then add them, uh, into the strategic plan in order to be truly effective in, uh, reducing crime and the perception of crime within a community. In the year 2021, after the, uh, the insurrection at the, uh, the, in the US Capitol, we, um, worked with partners to establish a safety plan and working and pushing back any threats that were coming to the city of Montpelier and to the Capitol complex. I'm extraordinarily proud of, of what the department has done and the dedication to the officers and dispatchers and the staff members there. And especially grateful for, um, the support that we received from our sister municipalities. It was, um, it was overwhelming and, and that's going to be a word you'll probably hear me say in, in so many different ways, um, as I, uh, give you all this presentation. We also streamlined our onboarding and, uh, promotional, uh, processes. We've in, incorporated, uh, critical hire, which is intelligence, uh, which is intelligence, uh, emotional intelligence indicator that helps us to understand the types of folks who are applying to become law enforcement officers within the department. So it's, it's a level of maturity, it's a level of assessing resiliency when, when stress happens. And making sure that, again, we want to invest early on in hiring the right people rather than paying the price, whether it's liability, whether it's safety and whether it's our own reputation and not hiring the right people. Uh, we also implemented police app with, uh, and promotional scoring rubrics and, uh, and in various types of hiring interviews. We, we've changed that, gone, going away from the paramilitary style, the old way of, of sitting across from a long table with one person and trying to scare them out of it. Um, we looked at just having regular conversations as normal human beings because they're looking at us just as much as we're looking at them. And the, and the generations that we're dealing with now are extraordinarily savvy. And, and, and they're not, you, you pull that old fashioned type of stuff with people, you're going to lose talent. And so we want to make sure that we, that we, uh, grow just as much as the, uh, as, as the folks that we're trying to establish. We, we don't want to be those old dogs. So we also did establish a very robust succession plan. And, and with that succession planning, uh, if, if I may, a quick story, and when one of the places that I worked at, um, I went in and I spoke to, to the detective section and they were telling me all about one detective. This detective was great, this detective's this, this detective's that. Every time we get something, we should have that detective. And, and we shouldn't give this case to that person. And my question to them was, well, why? Why don't we have a detective session that's just, that's full of Detective A? And, and that's what succession planning is. It's identifying, uh, people with talent and it's identifying people that, that have a desire and that have a skillset. And, and fostering that and moving folks along. So I think with the succession plan that we, that we implemented and by keeping communication as open as we could and exposing our, our staff to as many angles of policing and administrative work as we could, um, internal promotional processes were extraordinarily difficult because everybody, uh, who applied works, were, were very capable, uh, very competent and, and, and had very strong leadership ability. So that's a, that's a good thing and that's a bad thing. Um, but, but throughout that, um, you know, folks have met those high qualifications. And I think they're the highest ones that, uh, of any police organization and within the state. And, and out of that, um, and I don't want to downplay the skills of, and, and what they bring to the table, but, but I think it's a reflection to our commitment that we have. Uh, a young lady who is in charge, who is our dispatch supervisor, Carrie McCool. And we have our first female sergeant, uh, in the history of the Montpelier Police Department. Uh, some of the other things, uh, that we looked into or that we brought aboard was the, uh, high intensity drug trafficking, uh, agencies, the OD mapping, our dispatch, uh, uh, folks are able to look at trends and, and where ODs are happening within, uh, our county and other places. And then we use that information as far as like how we're outreach into the communities and how we're looking at, uh, potential, uh, uh, folks that we need to target for proactive investigations. We've incorporated CompStat, uh, uh, intelligence-led policing metrics, but due to low staffing, uh, that's been difficult because there is, it's an exhaustive amount of, um, administrative work that's required when we don't have a true CAD or, um, reporting system. Uh, benchmark analytics for an early warning system, that helps us to, to collect information on, and, and, and looking at where we are as far as incidences of use of force, um, as far as incidences of performance evaluations, complaints from the community, so that we can bring all this stuff out at the push of a button to make ourselves transparent to the communities that we serve. With benchmark analytics, it's also, again, it is partially, and, and it, it's imperative that, uh, we want to catch people before they go down a pathway where they can disrupt and destroy their professional lives and their personal lives. And again, you know, there's, there's, there's issues of suicide, uh, in, in the news and it affects everyone, but especially first responders are especially vulnerable for it. And benchmark analytics helps us in, in, in identifying people who may need a little bit more of attention. Um, and, and then coupled with, again, one of the other things that I want to bring up, again, with that gratefulness is, uh, is the commitment from our city manager, our assistant city manager and, and for the, from the council in recognizing those stressful issues. We brought in advanced interviewing training, uh, we applied for a federal officer wellness grant for the entire county of Washington County. Again, I, I, I point to the unfortunate incident that happened, uh, in Berlin where there was an officer that did commit, uh, a murder-suicide. And, and that shows, um, the urgency of the now and how we have to and why we have to identify these types of issues. Uh, we did apply for and win a CryTech grant for officer survival training. CryTech stands for the Collaborative Reform Initiative Assistance Center. And through that, that training, we got, um, uh, you know, it helped officers as officers across the country were being targeted. Um, unfortunately, but, but more importantly, uh, that the murder of George Floyd, um, positional asphyxiation. And the, the tactics that we learned through that training pulled away from traditional ways of how law enforcement utilized force and got away from putting pressure on the head, neck and the spine, especially when we have a person in a prone position. And, and the person who taught us is a homegrown Vermonter and a previous Montpelier police officer who left off to the Department of Homeland Security and worked for, uh, the, uh, HSI unit there. And he came back to give us some very good training. Um, we've, uh, improved access or created access to additional investigative records such as Clear, eGuardian and the Law Enforcement Enterprise Portal with the, with the Federal Bureau of Investigations. And then we also won, uh, a little over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in DHS grants, which we use for building security upgrades in City Hall, in the police department. We also procured a virtual reality training machine with that money. And then we brought in anti-vehicle barriers because when I, when I first got here, uh, Nord told me one of the biggest things that keeps him up at night is he doesn't, all the festivities and all of the, the events that we have in Montpelier, he does not want to see a repeat of someone driving through our community and hurting our community when they're doing nothing more than trying to enjoy the time they have with each other and with their families. So we invested in that and we also helped the Capitol Police get their grant to, to add to those, the same, uh, anti-vehicle barriers that we've got. And then we've also implemented, um, uh, brought in new crime. And then we've also implemented, brought in new crime scene processing kits. In 2022, we won, we got another grant from the Stanton Foundation. K-9 Atlas is here, and he'll be going off in February to narcotics training. So we got that without having to ask the the city for additional money. We thank you to the generosity, again. It means a lot to me because this is something near and dear to my heart. But one of the things that Norrie and I and Tony and especially Neil, before he left, that's big for us, is to make sure that we can do everything we can to help our staff whenever they're when they're dealing with problems and issues. So thank you for the funding. And then we did sign into a $10,000 contract with the Vermont First Center for First Responder Wellness, in which we have folks who come out and talk to our staff on a repeated basis, on a contractual basis, daytime, nighttime, afternoon, and just to see how things are going. Again, thanks to the PRC and the the council. We've implemented a body-worn camera program. We've implemented a vehicle replacement program, and we brought in new in-car computers for each of our patrol vehicles. We brought in human trafficking training through a grant that we did not have to reach into any of our coffers for. We incorporated Power DMS, which is a policy system. One of the PRC recommendations was to put our policies out there. And our current system does not have the bandwidth to put out all the policies that we have. But through Power DMS, you can go on the Montpelier Police Department's website, and you can see each one of our policies, and it's easy to update these policies within a click of a button. It also helps us to to ensure that our officers and our staff are reading these policies, and we can actually even add tests to them to make sure that there's comprehension there. We won another grant through the Department of Homeland Security in 2022, and we used that, and we just completed training, 40 hours, two weeks of training for a countywide tactical team. And I'll go into this a little bit more about the regionalization of shared assets. But the threats are real, and they're getting alarmingly a little bit more more worrisome, and especially with where we are. So we we took that initial step, and now we have officers who are trained to, in concepts that are designed to minimize use of force rather than utilizing force. And by say that is, so how can tactics be de-escalatory? Well, the whole thing is, A, you don't go rushing into a building on a search warrant with the idea that I need to, I need to get the drugs before they flush them down the toilet. That's 1980s and 1990s BS. You don't do that type of stuff. You you enter into homes in a very methodical way, and then the whole concept is to see the person before they see you and then engage, that you don't have to use deadly force or any types of force. And it works, and it sincerely works. And and through this, I think that we've, we're going to be bringing on, we're going to see this as a trend throughout the state of Vermont. We we have been part of a systems improvement committee throughout the state, looking at how we can address criminal justice issues within law enforcement. We've also assisted in in giving feedback on the statewide use of force policy and body-worn camera policy developments. We standardized threat and vulnerability reporting and projections. And then we've also worked hard to get that, at least to start, the $2.4 million grant from the state for to update our communications infrastructure. We've also procured dispatch consoles, which are, as I understand from Carrie, they are sitting at the department now. The only thing that we're waiting for are just the is just the furniture. We've worked with Berry, a very strong partnership, again, to make sure we have redundancy backup operations. And and we've updated our policies to modernize, to 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 hit those 21st century policing pillars. Those include use of force, whistleblower, which is, you don't see many people, but it protects officers who have that mandated duty to report from reprisal, criminal threat assessments, exits, interviews, duty to intervene, crime scene protection, firearms, vehicle pursuits, body-worn cameras, and national incident management systems. Just really briefly, NiBRA's reporting is just nothing more than just, this is just to give you kind of a snapshot of, again, from annual reporting, I just pulled these numbers from, tells you the level of calls for service that we've had in 2020 and 21, and that the top 10 instances have rotated between traffic stops, disorderly conduct, and, you know, the one year you'll have 10 of these, the next year one of them will drop off, and the other one would pop up. But the bottom line is, this is a, the fact that there is low crime, and I would say a perception of low crime within the city of Montpelier is is a testament to the the work and that officers, dispatchers, parking, that everybody puts into getting to understand their community members, gaining the trust, the one-on-one trust, and then looking at proactivity when it's warranted. And but more so than that, it's a reflection of the community of Montpelier. It's a reflection of the standards of the people that we serve. And this is why we're extraordinarily lucky, that we don't have to deal with a lot of the the problems that other places, to include places in, in Vermont, have to deal with. So with that, I'll just turn it over to. Okay. So so Will, he he got me the way I pushed him up in front the last few minutes. So so really briefing to touch on staffing and morale. We're currently sitting at 13 sworn officers with the, within the department. Our dispatch is fully staffed. We have one officer who's on administrative leave, and upon my leave, we will be down to 13 officers available to work. I'm sorry, 11 officers available to work. But we have three candidates who are scheduled for the next academy class, which will begin early 2023. And then we're starting to see more quality applicants trickle in. And and I'll get to that, and there's, I think, there's a huge reason as to why. And and I'll get to that one in a little bit. Our staff has felt some significant relief with the scheduling changes that that our city manager, assistant city manager, helped us to plan through. And especially, thank you, thank you, from our staff and from their families for for the increases. It's really helped. And and so we will always continue to manage numerous competing administrative and operational priorities. The feedback nationally and locally is that there's still some lingering vocal anti-law enforcement sentiment, and that's contributing to low morale and the ability to attract people overall into the profession. But what I will say, and what I have always said, is that Montpelier and our city council support our staff, and they support this police department. And there has never, ever been a doubt that that has been the case. Despite what anyone may have said, or despite any rumors out there in the street, we don't, we enjoy the support and the trust of our council. And that is one of the things that makes us extraordinarily attractive to other members, other law enforcement officers within this state, because several times before, hey, I'm ready to come to Montpelier, or hey, man, you guys are doing this, you guys are doing this. Well, why don't you come on over? Oh, I can't, I'm vested, and several of them have been VSP, with all due respect. But they're vested in those pensions there, and they can't necessarily walk over. But it's it's well-known that that this this council is, this council is tough in the sense that this council challenges us to come out of that comfort zone and to be better than what we, that you all see where we can go, and you push us to that. And so while that parts of it is is tough, as it should be, what's never in question is your support for our organization. So looking at some of the projects in work, the CIT program, the Steering Committee has been in place for about a year now. The training program is nearly complete. We've got the syllabuses, everything worked out, who's going to be training. I just have to do a few scenarios and then early to, I'm sorry, in March. So and we've also, I've also talked to the Vermont Associations of Chiefs of Police and told them about the CIT program, and they are all on board, willing to send their staff to CIT training once it becomes available. It's 40 hours, but it's well worth it. And then we also, there was a $150,000 grant from Thrive that went to Washington County Mental Health Services, and Montpelier had also petitioned the state, and we're waiting to hear back from a possible another $150,000 that we can use to implement into standing up a CIT program. Now, the thing about a CIT program, it's more than just training for law enforcement officers and first responders. It's bringing about a response system in dealing with people who are in critical, who are in crisis mode. It's not training, it's how do we humanely deal with folks who are having doubt, undoubtedly one of the worst days of their life, and how are we helping them out of it rather than compounding their problems by pushing them into the criminal justice system or making the experience a traumatic experience even more traumatic for them? So that's what the CIT program is about. Our final session of the COPS Office Grant, which is the anti-bias online training, we are participants site, and after early 2023, we expect that this grant that the COPS Office gave to this training group, of which Montpelier has had a part in, will be the national standard in law enforcement officers getting implicit bias training. So it's no longer, you know, finding somebody who says that, oh, I can teach you an implicit bias training, well, what are your credentials? What are your training? What are your experiences? We're going to set a national model for all law enforcement agencies throughout the country as far as anti-bias online training. We've had, we have to implement the communications infrastructure upgrade and assist the state in dispatching. We have to purchase a base radio station replacement, and we have to look at a true CAD systems and investigative software that has an emphasis on fighting domestic terrorism, and I'll dive into that really quickly. So my final slide is, and there's a typo there. It should be MPD's accomplishments could not have happened without the support and trust of the city manager. Could not. But yeah, I did. But the, but it would not be Brian Peet if I did not have a screw-up someplace in a slide. And it's a terrible screw, like the screw-up about Laguna Beach. So. But so so I, from the bottom of my heart, one thing I've learned being here, through Bill, through Cameron, through Kelly, through the leadership, and through how I've seen this council react, where I came from, this is, I don't see this, whether it's in Chicago, whether it's in New Mexico. And the one word that I would say is grace, and that I wish that people understood the level of of stress that you voluntarily take on. I'm not sucking up to you because I, that's not me, but there is, there is a level of stress that comes with this because there is an altruistic expectation that folks who put themselves out for public service do. And I have seen you all push and claw to make this community better. And I and I hope that the members of the community, and I'm pretty sure they are, are very cognizant of that. And so thank you. Thank you for training and teaching me and preparing me for the next level of my professional career. So I'll say that, I'll ask, that that going forward, that you look to preserve qualified immunity for police officers in Vermont. Qualified immunity, there's a lot of people who have opinions on it. There are a lot of people who are academics that talk about it, but it's one thing to be out in the field to be dealing with it. Qualified immunity does not change a culture. What changes a culture is leadership and oversight in the sense that you have to have sunshine and you have to have transparency, and that leads into accountability because no matter if you take away my qualified immunity, but I can still hide somebody's wrongful acts from you, you'll never be able to to hold us accountable. And sunshine and transparency and accountability, that's what it is. To know what officers are dealing with, to know what officers have done and what officers are being accused of, and and how we're doing the process, that helps everything. So I would say that it's transparency is the key to stop a culture that has too long looked into covering for each other. I would say to advocate for regional consolidation. EMS, fire, there, there are all kinds of reports out there that are saying there are fewer and fewer volunteers that are coming in to do it, and in law enforcement especially. And the way that we're doing things right now, we will not survive in Vermont if we do not consolidate or regionalize the resources that we have left. The projections of getting out of this, if they were fortunate, are we're looking at five years. So I will say that, again, the chiefs and I in Washington County have spoken offline several times, and there is, this is the time. This is the time. Law enforcement chiefs in Washington County have talked about this. And and I don't, I think at this particular point in time, the the only thing that may stop it would be a political ego. It's not going to be a law enforcement ego that, hey, I need to be the chief, I need to be in charge, or the traditional Bravo. I think it's just going to take that political will to look and see what that would look like. I would, again, fully endorse the implementation of the CRO program. That will help us to continue to build the, that's the Community Resource Officer Program, to build the trust between us and our community. This is key. We're still working towards that. We've got the right person in the spot, and we just have to, Norrie has been diligent in bringing about new talent into the department. So once that comes up, the CRO program will be up and running. I would say, again, from the tactical point of it, from the law enforcement point of it, continue security enhancements and response for the Capitol area, and concentrate on strategies that are going to combat issues because there's an alarming crease of domestic violence, threats against elected officials. Now, the trend is not just nationally elected officials, it's state municipally elected officials. And I'm not saying that to scare you, just saying that this is where they're looking at ease of access now, and we're committed to making sure that you're safe. We always will be. Government facilities are always been a target, schools, faith-based entities that we're seeing now, especially our friends and neighbors in the Jewish community. And and now more than ever, we're seeing targets against the LGBTQIA. So we have to make sure we're diligent, and we have, in Montpelier, we have the most critical resource infrastructures in the state. And our officers need to be ready to respond to any possible threat that we can find, that can find us, whether it's domestic or foreign terrorism. I would also, and I know this is a priority for Norrie, is to look at reestablishing that SRO, the School Resource Officer Program, and bringing officers back to federal task force positions within the department. Again, advocate for modern statewide use of force tactics that minimize positional asphyxiation, keeps knees, arms, weight off the head, neck, and spine. We have the training to do that, we just have to get it approved through the state. And because we've been doing use of force tactics since, it's the same stuff since the mid-'70s, and we need to evolve beyond that. And it's going to take push, the political pressure and will to change that. There are tactics available to keep people from dying from positional asphyxiation and unintended consequences like that. We just have to do them. Advocate to modernize statewide law enforcement training, looking at flexibility and improving reciprocity for people coming from outside the state and being certified as police officers in-state, that we have to go after proactive, proactively. Yeah, that took me two years to get my Level 3 certification. They 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 gave up. On the last one, they said, we don't have training, so we're going to give it to you. He, and Norrie's literally been following me around with a leash. I did not get my Level 3 certification until roughly five months ago, and they gave up. I had one training to go, and they gave up. They're like, we, we don't see, we're going to offer it sooner, we're just going to sign off on it. Here you go. So so we have to do that. Human trafficking, that's a, that's a hard discussion for anybody. But while we stand here talking about these things today, there are, there are people suffering here in Vermont, and we have to find a way to bring that into the light because there are not, there are far too few resources that are being used to fight human trafficking in our state. We need to coordinate with the ATF to pursue a grant program that they have for K-9s to continue our strong partnership with federal agencies, and we have to continue to invest in a very robust succession plan. So with that being said, again, on a personal note, it is extraordinarily different, difficult and bittersweet. But I thank you for the privilege to serve you, and I thank Bill, Cameron, Kelly, for your faith in me because I came here damaged. I came here as 124 applications putting into other places, and they wouldn't touch me because of where I, what I came from. But you have faith in me. So thank you, and I want to thank Norrie. And I want to thank Norwood for his, his continued mentorship, and especially the, the men and women of the Montpelier Police Department. It has been a true honor. It has been the highlight of my career, and this was never meant to be a stepping stone. This is, this was the pinnacle of, of where I wanted to be. And if I could imagine what a police department should be, it's this. And that the, to the members of the community, thank you for your support, your outpouring of support to my family, to myself. And you need to know that you have, know your blessings, because you have a city council, and you have a police department, and you have a team of staff members of this city that are committed undoubtedly and unapologetically to serving this community. So thank you for the opportunity, and I, and I will answer any questions that you may have of me.
Oh, yes. Well, I, before I say a few things.
It's late, boss. We've got to get moving.
That's okay. You know, this is worth it. If, if other folks have things that they would like to say, that would be welcome now, but then I'll, I'll save my comment at the end if other folks have things they want to say. Or you don't have to. Yes, go ahead.
I'd just say, like, you know, seeing Dan Toll get up there, this is somebody who's like a kind of vocal member of the police review force. He'd disagree with you a lot, but it's a testament to you that I think you changed a lot of people's minds of what they thought of law enforcement. And the community, I think, really gave a collective sigh when they heard the news you were leaving. And, you know, you entered in such a difficult period here where, you know, recruitment retention was rough, and you could have, like, you could have filled the police department with a bunch of people who would be subpar and negatively affect this town for like ages ago, but you didn't. You worked understaffed, you know? You did the patrol yourself. You did what, you know, Deputy Nordensen said, you, you chose good people and, you know, made them good cops. And I think someone like Sergeant Matthews is a great example of that, too. You know, you see the, the confidence and the great things she's doing, you know? But honestly, Chief, it's, you know, it's, it's really with a heavy heart to see you go there. And, you know, I, I've learned so much from you, and I, you know, it's, it's, you, you got to do what you got to do, but you, you will be missed, sir. You, you will indeed.
Thank you, sir. You're in good hands. You're in damn good hands.
We are.
Any other thoughts? Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, just wanted to thank you, Chief. You know, as one of the people who served on the police review committee, you know, that was tons of work and a lot of really hard conversations and really pushing and, you know, right in the midst of the George Floyd murder and all of that. So like, super intense, COVID's going on, and it was, it was just like an honor to work with you. I learned so much from you. I think the community learned a lot, you know, and I think together, like you said, we like had push and pull, and it was a really healthy and transparent and honest debate and conversation. And I'm just, I'm really grateful, and I just really appreciate the communication you've brought to the community and the structures you've built. So I think the legacy that you're leaving, too, you know, like, I'll miss you, you'll be missed, and you built systems, you know, you came into a strong department and continue to build on those. And so I think, you know, with our new incoming chief, so much to build on and a great department you're leaving behind. So I think that's just such a testament to, to your leadership of, you know, building that longevity of these values. So I'll miss you.
Go ahead, Jack.
I'll follow up on what Lauren said, because as someone else who worked on the Police Review Commission, and it was tough. It was a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of time for you to listen to people that didn't agree with where you were coming from, or, or had definitely different perspectives. I thought it was very impressive and valuable that no matter how clear you were in your own views, you were never defensive or uncooperative. Your ability to listen to the, and engage with the, the debate was part of what made it a successful, successful process. And coming up with the new, with new policies, adopting policies and implementing policies has been, has been very productive for the city, and I think we're in a better place than, than we were when, when you came. So like everyone else, I'll, I'll miss you here in the community, and good luck where you're going.
Yes. I've already kind of said goodbye, but, I mean, everybody's already saying things, and I'm sitting here crying like a boob, so. Just thank you for making me feel safe. That is probably one of the biggest gifts. Big bad LA girl, don't like cops. I really like you. And I really appreciate how easy it is to just sit and talk with you. You're not this mean, scary, intimidating guy, and my defenses are down now when I am around police officers, and I attribute that to the police department here, but also to you. So thank you for that gift, and you'll leave my thoughts as you travel, so.
Thank you, and your gift has a special place of honor in my home. Thank you.
Yay, good. I'm so glad. Safe travels.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just say thank you and echo what everyone else has said, and, you know, Montpelier's better off for having had you here, and it's a real loss to have you go. And the, just the, the impact that you've had on people's perception of the police, you know, I think that, that's what a lot of people here have said, and I think that that's been just so obvious from everywhere in the community, and I thank you for that. That will last after you go. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so I.
Rachel.
Well, I also want to thank you. It has been an extraordinary, wonderful pleasure on my behalf to work with you, and I'm so grateful that I had this opportunity to, to get to know you and to work with you. I also want you to know that, that list of suggestions, that, those final thoughts that you had, I want you to know that even as I step into a different role, I am taking all of those thoughts to heart and really appreciate and trust your opinion about, about those things. And I'm, I look forward to working together with the legislature on some of those points. Also, this list of accomplishments that the department has achieved over the last two years, I also, I can't believe it's only been two years that you've done all of this incredible work. You did all of that through a pandemic, right? Like, you could have had all the excuses in the world to say, nah, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the, you know, we don't have the, the staff to work on these things, but no, like, you helped push the department forward even when it was hard. And also, through two of the most difficult years, it has probably been to be a police officer anywhere in the country. And so, and you carried the department through this extraordinarily difficult time. And in fact, didn't just, didn't just carry it, made it better, and that is just absolutely remarkable. I want you to know that we are extraordinarily proud of you, we're proud of the department. I want to thank you for everything that you've brought to the department and to our community because we are a better place specifically because you were here and served with us, for us. And so with that, I, it is my pleasure and my honor to present you with a couple of things. So one is just a, a small gift, but the other is a key to the city of Montpelier.
She's not going to tell you what door it goes to.
Looks like they don't lock that door.
Door is also.
Turn, turn a little bit.
Oh, we gotta, we gotta look this way. Look this way.
I can throw it at somebody. One person.
It's also a beer opener, I believe.
Bottle opener.
Bottle opener.
I'll use it for a red beer. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
And I'll just say, thanks, Chief. We've had a chance to talk. But I will say, while you're all here, so yes, I will thank you, Chief. We've had many private moments. Best gamble I ever took was hiring you. And one of the things that you accomplished, as you talked a lot about, was your succession planning. So I'm going to give everybody a sneak preview of a public announcement for tomorrow, and that is Eric Nordensen will be our next chief of police starting December 21st. He learned from two or three of the best, Chief Pete, Chief Ficus, and Chief Hoyt, and he's been here almost as long as I have. We were talking about that the other day, and wow, I remember him as a rookie. And I'm glad you're here. No, he's going to be great. He is a tough act to follow. The support from the department, from the community, and from the prior chiefs for him was outstanding. And Chief Pete, I thank you for leaving Deputy Chief, soon-to-be Chief Nordensen in, in a place, better place than he was three years ago when he wasn't interested in this job. So you've done a great job with that and bringing along all, all your folks. Congrats to Eric, and congratulations to you, Chief. Good luck moving on.
Okay. All right. Well, so moving on to our next item here. So we had a question about whether we should have a, a public hearing about this. So just so you know my thoughts on this, and I'm open to other thoughts, I, I think we probably do need to go into executive session to discuss what, what we're going to do, and that we could have a, a public hearing as, as been requested, but I think that's something that we could also discuss in executive session. Like, as I said, the one does not necessarily preclude the other. So that, that would be my suggestion. And I, if we do a public hearing, I would suggest that it's not tonight. So that's, yeah. So I would suggest that we go into executive session, and we may come out and have an action or a course of action we want to take. Other thoughts? Yep, I'm seeing some thumbs up, some nods. Okay. Do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yeah.
If you would come up to the microphone, that'd be great.
This one's still working.
Sure, that's fine.
Gee, after all of that emotional, you know, feel-good stuff, you know, it's like a, now this. When you say go into executive session and then some action, but that action would not entail or involve making a decision relative to whether my appointment to the commission is rescinded, right? There would have to be the public hearing first, correct? It could not be based upon, because as I said previously, if, if, if your discussion and then subsequent decision is going to be based upon the memorandum which you received, and I know it wasn't, I mean, it's like, one does one's best, nothing's ever going to be 100% perfect. But there are some, couple of glaring, glaring omissions in that report, which I think of a profound importance. And I would feel, I, I would feel, I would feel abused, frankly, if a decision was made because, again, as I said earlier, this to you is an agenda item. To me, it's about my character. And if I may say something just on a personal note, since the year 2009, I'm 74 years of age, since the year 2009, except for one year during, for the COVID thing, I go to India twice a year to go on meditation retreats. My meditation retreats are, is what I call my spiritual IRA. My time on this planet is very, very limited. The truth is extremely important to me. You know, I've been a vegetarian since the time I was 20 years of age because I believe that animals are our younger brothers and sisters. So the truth and my preparing for my next lifetime is very, very important to me. People could, who know me, could say, you know, Tom, you know, you could describe him as being contrary, contentious, maybe even irascible. But sleaze is one word that people would never, ever say about me. And the, the kinds of innuendos and the kinds of assertions that were made about my behavior, the things that I said. But this, relative to that, there's just one very, very important fact about Monica that was omitted in Bill's report, which is very, very germane to this matter at hand, and that is this. When I went to see her poetry reading at the, and you all have read the memorandum, when I went to see her at the poetry reading, at the very outset of her reading, she said to everybody present, six or eight of us, she said, "My artwork and my poetry are helping me heal from my traumatic brain injury." I went online and I, what is this? After all this brouhaha? And this is a fact. It's not like something. And this is why I say, I mentioned this to Bill, but it's not in the report. I went online and it's like, well, okay, what is traumatic brain injury? The very first thing they're talking about is a person suffers from an anxiety and that they have emotional responses that are disproportionate to reality. So I did not want to say this here. I wanted to say it, you know, like maybe, but there was no opportunity to do that. So I'm sorry, but it's coming out this way. But as I say, it's about my character. So thank you. I will wait here, I guess, until you do whatever.
And just, so you know, we, we may come out and make a decision. I think that is possible. But we'll, we can talk about what we're obligated to do. Okay, so with that, is there a motion?
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to one BSA Section 313A, three, regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer. And I, I just want to point out, as, as we're discussing this and based on your comment, Mayor, that I don't think there's anything that requires the, us to go into executive session, that it is possible, it's, it's always discretionary with the public body, so it's possible to not do this in executive session, but there's more than one public officer involved, and so that's part of the reason that I think it's appropriate to go into executive session. And I'll also point out to the council and the members of the public who are in attendance that the statutes also provide that no final or binding decision can be made except in public session. So whatever's discussed, discussed in executive session, the public, final vote would be in public session.
Yep.
I would second that.
Yep. Okay. So motion in a second. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, so we. All right, so we will be back, at least to adjourn, and possibly to have some further motion. We'll see. Okay, thanks. Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So, moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, Jack.
Pursuant to Section 317B of the Montpelier City Charter, I move that Tom Mulholland be removed from the Public Art Commission.
Is further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, well, thank you. We just want to recognize it was not an appointment that was working out for the committee. So, we assume that we're going to reopen advertising for that committee? And so, with that, we'll move on to, so, thank you, and we'll move on to our council reports, and we're going to start with Donna.
Okay, happy holidays, everyone. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Carrie.
I don't have any report, thank you.
Connor. Jennifer. Okay, Jack.
Also passing, it's very late.
Lauren. It is super late. I will also pass John. Okay, Bill.
Pressure's on. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I can't pass, but I will try to do this quickly. Already announced Chief Nordensen's appointment effective next Wednesday. We are going to do a little swearing in for him with Chief Pete, Chief Ficus, and Chief Hoyt present, and obviously family and so forth. I mentioned to the, I can't remember who I mentioned this to, either the Capitol Committee or all of you, but the group working on the Country Club Road would like to have a special meeting on January 18 with you, council, on Wednesday night. That's an off weeknight for us so that we have the whole night to go through their plans and their thinking and the designs. They've got two or three design options, and I think they want to. And then, that's going to be followed up with a public meeting onsite on the, basically the same pattern they did last time. It'll be on January 28 onsite, January 2 here in city council, and then I forget the other, January 9, maybe? I can't, thank you, online. So, they would like to, if that is okay with you, I couldn't commit without checking with you.
What are the dates of that again? Sorry?
So, the main thing is the January 18 special meeting here for the council, to brief the council, and we can send you out the others, but can, are you available that evening? It's a non, it's a third Wednesday. We had kind of held it as a possible budget workshop. 6:30, yeah.
Even if I wanted to be here, I will not. I'm otherwise obligated anyway.
So, so for the five of you that will still be on the council? Okay, great, then we all schedule that. We are very close on the finance director. Hopefully, we'll also have an announcement on that by next week, if not the end of this week. We'll see. Very close. And just, our Capitol Committee meeting left our meeting saying, at the end of the meeting tonight, we decide whether we want to meet again tomorrow, next week. And we said we'd wait. So, now, there's no more time to wait. So...
Wait, I'm sorry.
The members of the Capitol Improvement Committee, the question was, do you want to get together again next week before the council meeting? And the answer was, let's wait and hear the whole budget, let's see how it goes, and we'll decide at the end of the meeting. And I would say this is definitely the end of the meeting.
I bid you all good evening, but is that it?
Sorry, that was like not quite the right time to ask that question, but, well, if you want to ask a question, you can do that in a minute. But right now, the question is for the Capitol Improvement Committee.
The members of the Capitol Improvement Committee. Either way, it's fine. There's no right or wrong answer. Just do your, don't your.
Are you there? No, you were not there.
I feel like we could address anything in the full budget discussion. I don't, I think we got the information we needed, so I think no. If everyone's comfortable, I'd say no.
Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Is that, anything else? Did you have anything further you'd like to say?
No, no, it's a question. Is that all there is? Is there no explanation as to why you came with that determination?
That is all there is. Okay. All right, so with that, I think that is it. So, without objection, we will consider the meeting adjourned. Phew. Thank you.